All right, ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. It is February 9th, 2011. It is now 7:00 PM on the button. At this particular point in time, I'll invite anyone from the public to come up for public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the school committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to good news. Dr. Rabinovich.
The following Wareham High School students were recognized at the Boston Globe Scholastic Art Awards. Honorable mentions went to Elisa Capozzi, Emily Mellon, and Alex Cuto. Silver key, second place, went to Sean Kinsky, Alex Cuto, Brianna McCarney. And the silver key recipients will have their work shown in February at the Boston Globe Scholastic Exhibit in Boston. So that is the good news that I have.
Excellent. Anyone else on the committee have good news?
I guess the good news...
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, I guess the good news was last week's meeting increased the peace, which was well attended by the Police Department. The chief was there, members of the Board of Selectmen, media. And we're trying to get something going for February 18th. It's still in the works, but it was a good showing. They had representatives from the court system, corrections office, and working with Officer Baptiste, trying to get a guest speaker for the event to tie it in, following the Wareham Girls Basketball Game against Case on the 18th. So it's good that it's starting to come together. We still have some work to do. I don't know if Dr. Rabinovich wants to add anything. He was there, and I thought everybody is excited about trying to step up to get us going in the right direction with the kids and trying to address the violence. So that's definitely good news.
No, I agree with Kenny. I think it was a great showing. There were four members of the Police Department, I think, that were there, and we had members of local clergy that were there. We had representatives from Boys and Girls Club, parents, the Monteros representatives were there from the Montero Fund, and a number of people that were just interested in increasing the peace and stopping violence. And my hope is that this kickoff event will then continue in a committee that will continue to work to identify what the issues are in the community and work to try to alleviate the problems.
Very good. Thank you, Ken, for attending while I was out of town that night, but I really appreciate your efforts. Anyone else have good news? All right, moving along. Report of the chair. I'll waive my report tonight. Report of the superintendent.
A minute, sorry.
Oh, a minute. Oh, I skipped that?
Yep.
Thank you.
You were moving fast.
I was moving fast. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of January 27th.
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any additions or deletions? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, 5-0-0. Now I'd like to approve the minutes of February 2nd. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, omissions, deletions.
Sure.
Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, staying?
One.
All right, so it'll be 4-0-1. Now we'll go to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. And I have an announcement of that it is time for kindergarten registration. And the new packets have come out, and as of today, Michelle put a group of them outside of our office on a table. We have six or seven of them. I'm sure that you can go to the website also to get one. And each of the schools will also have these packages. And...
Dr. Rabinovich?
Yes.
I just wanted you to know that I did go online today. My son will be entering kindergarten this year, and I was able to go on to the site. Very easy to click on it, print it out, and everything's there that I need.
Excellent.
Very good.
And so kindergarten registration is Wednesday, March 2nd, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And Mr. Luzon, where is that going to be held?
At both schools.
At both schools, at the Hammond School and at the Decker School. And so parents should definitely get a jump start, come to this first one, register their children, and then they can schedule for screenings, kindergarten screenings, and so forth. So very important. It's your first, I guess, your first touch with the school system, and we hope it goes well for you.
Very good. Anything else, Dr. Rabinovich?
No, that's all tonight.
Report of the student representative.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a quick note. I just came from a Cape Cod Collaborative Meeting, and I was sitting next to the Dennis Yarmuth Representative, who told me that over the last 10 years, as a result of a variety of things, including school choice, his enrollment has gone from 4,500 to 3,200 in just 10 years. And I was wondering what you... Do you believe that we've stabilized in terms of our enrollment? Because I noticed in Anna's document that she's working on, she's showing a projected slight uptick for total enrollment for next year.
I do believe that we have stabilized, and I think the two new housing developments in town will actually stem where it was projected to go down for another year or two, but because of those new housing units, I think that that will not happen. In fact, it will go up. And what we see with preschool and with kindergarten, I believe that our numbers will start increasing again.
Thank you.
Report of the student representative.
Well, I think every student in the high school can say that their midterms are over.
Glad midterms are over.
Yeah. And last Thursday, we had the Honor Society induction, which was the Honor Society inductees, and then some of them that have been in it the last year, and their parents, the principal. And it was just, it was nice, very formal, good occasion. And then also, the Code Club is selling carnations, and I think the last day to get them is like tomorrow. And those are sold at all three lunches in the high school, and I'm not sure which charity they're going to, but I know they're going to get charity.
Just went down five minutes ago, because everybody's there in the audience. We're going to do jumping jacks. We've got a lot of jumping jacks in a couple of minutes.
Oh, no, it's kind of like daily business. Not much else going on.
Thanks, Dan.
Jessica, will the carnations be given out on Valentine?
Yes, I believe they'll be administered in advisory period, which is like the 20, 15 minutes before lunch slash fifth period starts, so it won't be interrupting class time, is what I believe.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Jessica, you'll be calling me, so I can make sure I'm there to get my carnation.
Yep, they'll be delivered to you.
Thank you. Any questions for Jessica? Don't say anything. Any questions for Jessica? Okay, moving right along. Committee reports, policy review. Who's reporting on policy review? Rachel?
Well, we have not had another meeting. We had to cancel due to weather, and we are bouncing back and forth with dates at this point for the next one, so we're working on that.
All right. So we're not voting on any policies tonight?
No, nope.
All right, very good. Community relations, Rhonda?
Invitation was sent out today to 20 members, a combination of parents, community members, administration, and teachers, asking them to take part in the next section of the Community Relations Subcommittee. As you know, that the first part of the Community Relations Subcommittee really focused on one of the things that you're going to see tonight, which is the output of the school improvement plans, as well as the surveys. We're now recruiting a new group, but that will probably still have some of the other members, the other members still part of it. But the goals, the initial goals that were sent out in the email, that I'm going to ask the group to respond to when we get together for our first meeting, are, one, promoting programs and services available to Wareham children. The second goal of this committee would be promoting opportunities for community members and parents to get involved. And, three, based on feedback that we received at the public forum, at the public meeting of the budget, I added onto it advocacy at the state level. But we'll see. I'm really going to be looking for this group to challenge those goals and come up exactly what we want to do for the rest of this half of the school year into the summertime and have more long-term goals for 2012.
That's great. I want to commend Rhonda on her efforts on two fronts. And all of her efforts thus far, as a new school committee person, you really jumped in both feet, and I really appreciate it. I know the rest of the board does, too, so thank you.
Thanks. The rest of the committee is, you know, they've been very supportive, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, since Rhonda mentioned the third part being advocacy, I think I received in the mail, and I think you probably did also from the MASC, Day on the Hill. And so if there's certain members of the committee that would like to register for that with me, so that we can go, and that's our opportunity to make an appointment with Susan Williams Gifford, as well as Mark Pachico, to sit down and to talk about some issues.
It's up on March, isn't it?
Yes, I think so.
What is the date? I haven't got it yet.
It was in the yellow flyer that we received. It was a newsletter that we received, and it was in there.
I don't have the date, but we'll maybe email it or find it. Michelle will help me out tomorrow finding it, and then we'll email it to you.
Very good. No, and I think that that's an important part of community relations, in terms of investing the entire community on, you know, what it is, not only what we're doing locally, but what we need to do at the state level and also at the national level. And I think that we get so caught up at the local level, because that's where we live, that's where we breathe and sleep. However, so much of what we do is affected by decisions made in Boston and in Washington. And I think in terms of community relations, we've got to expand our community beyond Wareham and start looking at these issues from a more global perspective. So anything that I can do, certainly I will help in any way possible.
Thanks. I have a feeling that out of the three goals, what will probably happen is that then we'll have subcommittees of the subcommittee that then would probably recruit. I mean, I think that, you know, the advocacy piece is so big that we'll probably need to expand that group and have folks that are willing to, you know, go and speak their mind at the state level, so.
Thank you. Okay, emergency planning, safety, Rachel?
I'm going to pass that over. We'll wait for Bob to do that.
Okay, sure. Curriculum review. Chairman, this curriculum review, we had several meetings since our last meeting, and most of what we talked about was the MasCor and the impact that MasCor was going to have, particularly at the secondary level. Just for those that might be listening out in the audience, MasCor is the direction in which the state is moving that is going to put increased demands, particularly in math and science, into our high school curriculums. So if we require more seat time and more curriculum for math and science, it impacts not only the scheduling, but also the overall structure of the curriculum at the high school. So we've been talking about that. We've been talking about how it impacts. We've been talking about maybe a few variations, particularly in math and science, that would still keep us in compliance and serve as a springboard to better understanding and better achievement in math and science. So that has been primarily the focus of the Curriculum Review Committee. The last meeting we had, we focused on the program of studies at the high school, and that was supposed to come before us this evening, but there were still a lot of questions, and there were some ambiguities in the minds of the Curriculum Review Subcommittee. So we have delayed that probably till the next meeting, until we can meet again and review more in-depth the program of studies. And so unless I have forgotten something, I'll defer to my fellow colleague on the Curriculum Review Committee.
No, that about covers it.
Any questions from the committee?
Just a quick, so the agenda item that we have here is going to be pushed to...
Number 10 will be pushed to the next school committee meeting.
Next school committee meeting. We will not be dealing with number 10, only because of the fact that there's still some ambiguities that we need to have resolved at the subcommittee level.
Cape Cod Collaborative? Jeff?
Well, the last...
We'll have to get a cup of coffee.
The last time I reported on the Cape Cod Collaborative, I think I mentioned we were going through significant strategic planning issues, and as a result of time passing and perhaps membership changing, and specifically superintendents having a different view, the status quo is pretty much reigning. So I don't expect many changes, if anything, other than an emphasis on better communication with superintendents, business managers, curriculum and instruction directors, and student services directors. I think the lack of communication was creating some, well, I'll say, false impressions about how the collaborative ran, created a sense of lack of transparency with respect to allocation of administrative overhead and things like that. So I can tell you, from a budget perspective, they are slightly ahead, both in terms of dollars and in terms of number of students that they're educating. And overall, I think the collaborative is doing fine, and I think it's a credit to the new executive director, who's Paul Hilton, who's really only been on the job a little over a year, I guess.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Just incidentally, if I can just break away for a second, you know, I feel remiss. You see a school around the corner there to get a cup of coffee. It's a big pot of coffee. Anybody that would like to have a cup of coffee, feel free to go back there and get some.
Or a cookie.
Or a cookie. We'll never drink it all, so you're more than welcome to go back. That should have been, that should be mentioned pretty much on a regular basis, just so people know. Ad hoc budget committee, Dr. Rabinovich?
Who would like to sum up our last two meetings and our future meetings?
I'll be glad to take a crack at it, but I'll also be glad to have addendums offered by you and Rhonda. Just to summarize, there was a pre-meeting in which it was decided that it would be a good idea to have an ad hoc budget meeting, a budget committee. We had our first meeting, I guess about two and a half weeks ago, which was primarily devoted to logistics and frequency of meeting and where we would meet and officially forming, because all three bodies, the Finance Committee, School Committee, and the Board of Selectmen had to approve the existence of the committee. And the general agreement was we would meet as often as necessary, and we would meet in a variety of different locations. The second meeting got down to the substance, and it was devoted to a presentation by the Capital Planning Committee. The good news is that the Capital Planning Committee is much more organized than it has been than, say, five or 10 years ago, or at least five years ago. The bad news is that they have an extraordinary amount of capital needs, and there's no obvious way to pay for them. And those run the gamut from school buses, obviously would be a capital need, because it's part of non-net school spending, but it's also vehicles and buildings and everything you can imagine. The definition, by the way, according to our charter, is that anything that costs $50,000 or more is considered a capital expense. That's a little loose, because it can be an aggregate amount of 50,000, meaning a number of things that add up to 50,000. There is not a definition that includes useful life, which gets into the issue of police cruisers. There's some feeling, and I will confess I feel this way, that police cruisers really aren't capital items despite their cost, because they don't last very long. And therefore, they probably should be, by most accounting standards, considered simply an operating expense of the police budget. There was a time during the early 2000s where that was true. Now, later, it became a part of the capital budget. Now it shows up in the budget as an article, a separate article, not necessarily part of the capital budget. Anyway, I'm going on and on. The bottom line is, capital spending was the focus of the second meeting. Third meeting is scheduled for this coming Friday. The focus will be two things. One is the status of the free cash of the town, which will be, I assume, presented by the town administrator or the town accountant. And the second item on the agenda is a consideration of the meals tax that was rejected, I want to say about a year and a half ago, something like that. There's a big difference. Free cash may or may not occur. You can almost consider that one-time revenue, whereas the meals tax would generate an ongoing source of revenue for the town. Some people have estimated that it would be about $400,000 a year, and it is a 0.75% addition to the sales tax on food. So for every $100 you spent in a restaurant, you'd pay an extra 75 cents. And we are also scheduled already to meet on March 1st. That will be, unlike the prior meetings, will be at 5:30 in the evening before a Board of Selectmen meeting, so that will be a Tuesday. These have been Friday morning meetings up until March 1st, and we do not have an agenda yet for that meeting.
Very good. Rhonda?
The only thing that I would add is that the discussion that we'll be having on the meals tax is whether we would put something on the agenda for the, for town meeting, and that it would be used for all capital items, not just for the schools or not just for police cruisers. It would, the recommendation right now in the discussion would be that it would be used for all capital planning items. I just wanted to add that. And I think, yes, I thought there was another meeting in February that was going to be at 5:30 also, or is March 1st the first one? I'll have to look.
I'll check. By the way, Day on the Hill is March 29th.
29th, it was in March.
The only thing that I would add also is that it was a lively discussion around capital and how to pay for things, which was a learning experience for me, that there were more ways, there were different ways to pay for something, whether it was leasing or buying, and that each one should be looked at differently. And what I walked away with it would be that when we're talking about the school buses, the presentation that Dr. Rabinovich made, I think, was one way that, one way that we could do it, which is the number of buses, how we would buy them. But when you really take a look at it, there are several different ways to go about purchasing capital items, and that each one should be taken separately, and really looking at how to get the best deal or the biggest bang for your buck. So that, for me, was something that I walked away with from that meeting, was just a lot of different people coming together with different ideas, different experiences, and that would be the type of group that I'd be looking for to discuss, you know, when looking at capital items, so.
The 15th and the 1st, the two meetings.
Thanks. Yeah, February 15th and March 1st at 5:30.
So have they talked about a longstanding goal at that level? If I could ask the folks on the ad hoc committee?
I'm sorry.
Have they established a long, I mean, is the long-term goal of the ad hoc committee to present a balanced budget at the town, April Town Meeting?
Oh, I think that's undoubtedly, yes, if the ad hoc committee could come together and get behind the town administrator's budget, so that we had three committees, the School Committee, the Finance Committee, and the Board of Selectmen, plus the two senior executives, the superintendent and the town administrator, all behind one budget, I think it would make the average citizen feel, okay, there's probably something I should vote for, as compared to going to town meetings still with a balanced budget up in the air. So there's no question that's the goal. Getting there is going to be exceedingly difficult, and it's going to require compromise from everybody. There's no question about that.
Okay, any questions for the ad hoc committee? Okay, having seen none, having none, we move right along to item number eight, Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. Mr. Luzon. That should be put up by the tables, so they can sit down. It's a project. See what I'm talking about?
Well, good evening, and I want to thank Rhonda for her plug about the kindergarten packet being easily accessible on our website, so technology works, because I'm going to push technology a little bit and do a YouTube presentation for you to begin this part. So I think I will do that, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about our committee and just sort of go through what we're doing. But as a starting point, I think it's worth taking three minutes, which this YouTube clip is, of Governor Patrick's signing of the anti-bullying law back in May of 2010, because there's been a tremendous amount of work done between May of 2010 and now, and I think this will give you a little bit of a backdrop for that. So if all goes well, great. If it doesn't go well, just remember that Rhonda said that we did a really nice job getting the kindergarten packet up on the web. I might also add about the kindergarten packet, that it is also available in hard copy in all of the schools and the library and the town hall. So if folks can't get their kindergarten packet off the web, then please get them at one of the schools' town hall, library, or call us and we'll get one out to you. But it's very important for us to have kindergarten registration put together very, very quickly, so that we know the numbers of students that we're working with. Okay?
Okay. Wish me luck. Here we go. Governor Patrick in May of 2010, I hope.
For years now, parents, educators, advocates, and most importantly, students from all across Massachusetts have talked about this issue and demanded action. Their wait is over. Today, I sign into law a strong, sound bill to stop bullying in Massachusetts schools. The two... Two recent tragedies only served to painfully underscore the need for new protections and new policies. As wonderful as our schools and teachers and students are, we know that these issues affect our children at their most vulnerable moments, times when the pressures of peers and the insecurities of childhood and adolescence are most acute. Within this bill are contained a whole host of measures and new tools to empower students and make schools safer across the Commonwealth. It implements new expectations for instruction and for rules of prevention, including the first-ever cyberbullying rules. It mandates reporting, requires districts to develop policies and strategies for preventing and addressing instances of bullying. It establishes new lines of communication among education, public health, and public safety officials. It gives cities and towns the ability to address these issues as a community, pulling together resources and collaborating on solutions. And ultimately, it sends a message to every district, every school, and every classroom in this Commonwealth, that every child... that every child deserves a school environment free from harassment and abuse. I do want to end with a reminder that no matter what we do here, adults still must be adults. Parents have to act like parents, and that goes beyond any piece of legislation, as important as this is. When we're at the dinner table at night, we need to talk with our children about what happened that day at school. When we hear about something, we need to call the other parents and let them know. We need to act like the community that we want to be. This legislation is important, but it is no substitute for each of us showing each child we encounter the care, encouragement, and positive expectations they need and deserve. Bullying is not a normal piece of childhood. Emotional and physical abuse is more than, as they say, kids being kids. And all of us must both model the behavior we want to see and address incidents immediately.
So that was May of two thousand and ten, and, and this is now. So I would like very much to have this be as, as interactive as you would like it to be. We have several things that we want to talk about tonight. I certainly want to talk with you about the members of a group who spent many nights with me here, and I thank them for that. And they helped to look at each portion of what our obligation was, which was to put together a bully prevention and intervention plan for Wayham Public Schools, as was the charge for all school districts in the Commonwealth. Our plan was submitted about December fifteenth. So you have in front of you in your packet a draft of that plan, and incidentally, you also have a copy of the PowerPoint from this evening as well. So that, that plan has been submitted. We have not heard back from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but it, it is in. We want to talk with you about some elements of the issue of bullying in two thousand and eleven because it looks very, very different than it did twenty or thirty years ago, and I would like to just, just hit some high points about that. I'd like to talk with you about the required actions per the legislation. I want to review some pieces of the plan with you. I want to talk with you about what people can expect to see this spring and beyond, and also what has already happened as we submitted and distributed, I should say, a brochure in very, very early September, and we have hit all of those marks. And I also want to have you have a chance to ask questions of the members of the committee. And in terms of members of the committee, my hope was that I was going to have in red, I thought I'd color code this for you, the names of the folks that are here today, and most of that is true. Chris called at the last, last second and said that, that she had a child that came home with a fever, so Chris Holberg is not here, but Donna Ashley is. And we also had just many, many people that were involved with this in our, I think, every other week meetings for, for a couple of months. Dr. Richard Lane has also, as a community member, or a community business person, been involved with our meetings and has been a great help to us in putting together the plan as well. Dr. Sylvia, Rachel Gillette, Dr. Rubenovich have also been there and, and gone through this. I'm going to talk a lot about our partnership with Massachusetts Aggression and Reduction Center. We're very, very lucky that Mark is right at Bridgewater State University and that that organization is very, very much involved in not only our community efforts to have people hear about what bullying is about and how to handle it, as they will next Tuesday evening here at seven o'clock on, on the fifteenth of February. They also are going to be providing the first full staff training for our folks on March first, a half-day training of every professional and paraprofessional staff member in the district. So we're well on our way to making sure that the word is out, the professional development part of this is out, that people understand that bullying today needs to be stopped, that this school district, in their plan, the very first page of their plan, as you see in the, in the draft before you, is prohibiting bullying from the superintendent to the school committee to the PTAs and school councils. So the message to, to students is that bullying is absolutely prohibited in Wayham Public Schools. Central to the understanding of the problem is to look at several factors, and I'll just go over these very, very briefly. But it is important for people to understand that there is a difference between typical student conflict and bullying. The legislation in May of two thousand and ten defined bullying, cyberbullying, and retaliation. And it put a whole process around that. However, many things will not fit into the, into the summaries and conclusions of bullying investigations. They will fall into the realm of student conflict. People need to understand very clearly that Wayham Schools, the administration, the guidance services, the teachers deal with student conflict every day. That's not going to change. We're going to get better and better at that. We have multiple programs that we, that we use to be able to address student conflict in our schools, and that will continue. But bullying is specifically defined, and it is a subset of student conflict. As I said, the dynamics of bullying today is very different than it was before. Could have talked about that a bit. There are gender differences in who the bullies are. There are also differences in what the face of the bully, face quotes, face of the bully is like. We will also talk about that. Cyberbullying, and we have a new term, cyberdynamics, that there are things that happen on the internet, on text messages, Facebook, and so forth, that, that look, the look is brand new. This law is the very first law in Massachusetts and one of the fewest, one of the first laws in, in the country to actually deal with cyberbullying. So the challenge has been, and I believe in a recent memo that we have received, that it is continuing to be a very significant topic about how do you deal with cyberbullying within the schools, often because the cyberbullying occurs in the evening, it occurs on the weekends, and it occurs in situations that we, we don't have the, the kids physically with us. So it, it by itself is a challenge. A whole-school approach, including parents, clearly, the, they're, one of the tasks with bullying today is to be able to make sure everybody's talking the same language. They understand terms in the very same way, and that when we talk about bullying, cyberbullying, retaliation, victims, aggressors, and all of the language that you see in your packets, that everybody understands it in the same terms. Intervening in in-school bullying also has changed. There are certain things that we need to do. We're obligated to do it by this legislation, and we need to do it swiftly, and we need to do it with people who have been trained to do so. And I can tell you today that we have a, a group of twenty-five investigators within the schools that I just, yesterday, actually, completed the training with them. So we are moving along with being prepared to be able to follow the law around the different pieces that we're obligated to do within school. And finally, educating students around cyberbullying particularly, but all bullying in general. And General Tella is continuing to work on looking at the curriculum for bullying, which is one of the obligations in the, in the plan. And she will be working, along with the instructional leadership team, to look at the existing curriculum and how to embed the new curriculum through Mark and other places into our own curriculum. Please stop me if there are any questions, okay? Essential to the understanding of the definition of bullying, two of the very key elements have to do with the imbalance of power and the repetition of behavior. Student conflict does not necessarily, and probably does not, include an imbalance of power. Now, imbalance of power, when you are a junior high student versus a high school senior, for example, may look very different. Imbalance of power between a group of thirteen- or fourteen-year-old girls who have their phones, which we want to call, no longer call them phones. We need to call them computers because they are computers. So when kids have their smartphones in their hand, and there is a girl receiving forty or fifty messages at one time, there's an imbalance of power. So the imbalance of power, that, that concept is very different under very different circumstances, but it is clearly a very, very key component of, of bullying as it's defined. Repetition of behavior is that there are multiple times that a person is experiencing this kind of behavior, that it isn't necessarily one time when somebody decides to be mean to another person and it falls onto, into the definition of bullying by the legislation. I've talked about bullying and student conflict and the differences between those. Extremely important for people to understand, and this message will be sent out there over and over again, is that the role of the bystander in bullying is critically important. Bullying would go way down in percentages, way down in percentages. If we could help bystanders to be able to understand that their role is critical, for them to walk away, for them to say, I'm, I'm done with this, I'm, I'm going somewhere else, I'm not supporting you, the bystander is the person who can make the difference in having this end. And, and we need to work with the bystander to make sure that they're responding to that. And that's going to be a very big challenge for us, for all, all of us, a whole community. The profile of the bully not necessarily, is not necessarily the big and ugly and unliked person anymore. When I talked about the change in the face of the bully, when I was in school, I was the biggest kid with the meanest grip and all of those things. That is not the case, and we need to educate ourselves about that. And another important element to understand bullying today is that incidents of bullying are often not reported. They simply do not get reported. And we'll show you some of the information we have about that.
Can we go back to the role of the bystander for a second?
Yes.
Are you, are you suggesting?
Can you make it a long question so I can take a drink?
Are you suggesting that a third party has a responsibility, has an obligation to intervene when he or she observes bullying and accepts the risk and liability of doing, doing so?
Yes, they do, and we have a responsibility to help.
Because it could be another student.
Absolutely, and is most likely another group of students. And if those, if that group of students walks away and says to the bully, we're done with you, there, there is no purpose for the bully any longer, because those, the, the audience has gone away.
Oh, I was suggesting the opposite. I understand what your point is. If the audience disappears, perhaps the drive to be the bully disappears.
Right, the TV ratings go down.
But how about if multiple people are bullying a single individual, and a third party walks by? You would like to think that that good Samaritan, that bystander, would intervene. But if we're going to say to people, it's your responsibility, it's your obligation to do that, there are inherent risks and liabilities associated with doing so.
There absolutely are inherent risks and liabilities. There is also an obligation to us, and in the bullying investigation and training that I've been doing over the last week and a half, that is one of the things that we talk about, because part of the interview process is to make sure that you're checking in with the bystanders to feel if they do feel safe. Some kids will come forward and say, you know what, I'm afraid of this person, but I got to tell you, this is what's going on. And, and believe me, I, I, well, I'm going to finish that comment, and I want to make another comment, that, that, that it's critical for us, we're required to make sure that we at least make an attempt to do what we need to for that bystander to feel safe, in the very same way that we need to make the victim feel safe, as best we can, as best we can.
Just to piggyback on, on what Jeff brought up, I do believe that the bystander has an obligation, and as part of our training and work with students, would be about having bystanders say that what the person is doing is wrong and that they do not support it. And that if enough people stand up to a bully, that it also will go away, besides just leaving the situation.
Right. The other word that I haven't talked about yet is retaliation, because as you'll see in your plan, we've addressed retaliation. Retaliation being the aggressor, or the bully, as we've called him in the past. The aggressor needs to be warned, and all twenty-five people who have gone through the training with have been told that the aggressor needs to be told in the interview that there are legal ramifications of them going after either the, the victim or the bystanders once they walk out of that room. That there is a law that's very clear that this could turn into a criminal charge should they do the wrong thing and walk out of, out of that room and do anything other than go back to their class. And that is where the mushrooming of bullying often happens, that the bully or the aggressor becomes empowered, and then they start to, to spread that fear among other students. So between safety plans for those bystanders and victims, as well as being, educating the aggressors of the impact of the bullying law, are very, very critical pieces of what we need to be able to do.
Are the actions of the bystander in any intervention that they might take protected as a result of the appearance or the judgment that bullying is taking place? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I don't, and I was replaying it. Tell me again, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Well, you perceive, let's say you're a senior, okay? And you see some sophomores bullying another sophomore, and you intervene. And you, in order to be successful in that intervention, you make the judgment that you're going to have to physically intervene. Someone gets hurt. Have you, are you in any way protected by the fact that you made a judgment, you saw bullying, you felt a responsibility to intervene, and as a result of intervening, someone got hurt?
So, so we would, we would leave bullying aside and we'd look at discipline. And I think the, I think the question is, would that child be held to the same standard as other children around discipline, such as physical assault, when the physical assault was, was the result of them trying to protect somebody in a bullying situation? And I think that that really goes to the judgment of the principal, looking at all the circum, well, because, because it may very well be that it truly was. I mean, this is why you have to be careful about it. It may very well be that it truly was somebody being an absolutely good bystander. It may also be that there was a vendetta of some other sort of the kind. So it really does need to be.
It was an opportunity.
It was, it was, that's right, okay. Okay. I mentioned the incidents that are not often reported. I'm going to show you a slide about that. And incidentally, some of these beautiful slides are through Mass Aggression Reduction Center, who we have partnered with and have their permission to be able to do this. So as I said, the imbalance of power between the target and the aggressor is a critical piece for us, as is the repetition of an event as a characteristic. Bullying today is different from what was a generation or two or three or four ago, if you want to get to mine. This is what it used to look like in the age of the dinosaurs. It's changed a little bit. In fact, bullies are often popular. Victims may be pretty, popular, et cetera. And bullying is mainstream. It happens everywhere. It's not hidden. Think about this. When I was, no, I won't say me, when somebody in their forties was in school and they decided to slug somebody, there was, there was a, a school rule. And there was, there were also laws that said, you can't do that, now you're going to be punished. But when fifty kids get on Facebook and they send a message to one student, and that student, that maybe vulnerable thirteen-year-old, not feeling so good about myself, individual gets fifty people saying you're ugly, there's no law against that, but it's absolutely bullying. So the face of it has changed in two thousand and eleven as opposed to what it was in nineteen seventy-five, nineteen eighty. So we don't have the backup, haven't had the backup of, you just broke the law because you sent a Facebook comment. because you sent a Facebook comment." Yes. I would love you to tell me that I'm wrong.
Well, towards the Facebook comment?
Yes.
I know you're saying repetition, but like, say, those 50 people each sent one message.
Yes.
Would they be disciplined as a group acting against the victim? Or since it is the same person only doing it once, would they each be looked at like that, or as a whole group?
That's a great question.
It really is.
What's that?
It really is.
It is a very good question, and the answer is yes, potentially yes. I don't want to say yes categorically, but potentially yes. And the reason is that there's an imbalance of power. Those each, those individual students ganged up, and that's where the imbalance is, against this one young person. So so yes, potentially 50 of them could come down to the auditorium, because there was not enough room in the classroom, to say, "Here you go. You know, this is this is what we have found."
And 50 over a short time, I'd call that a conspiracy.
And multiple times, is it fair to say multiple times? That it may not be just one event, but it may be over the course, and may be progressive because other kids catch on, "Hey, guess what? We're sending her something at 12 o'clock today." And those, is that?
Yeah.
Pretty accurate? Okay.
Well, can I just add on to that? I think that Twitter is also becoming very, very popular, where it's even faster than Facebook. And so you have one person where you have 300 people following you, and you say one comment, and it goes out there, and then they all comment. And so I think that we also have to be aware, instead of going on your Facebook page and taking a look, that that Twitter is becoming a very, very popular way to get your message out. And sometimes it's not being used for good. So I just, and that was one of my questions later on, and that some of the rules, some of the language in here, I want to make sure that it covers things like that.
And we'll talk about this in a little while, but every year, we need to review this plan as as a component of the plan. As every year, we need to train investigators, every year, we need to provide staff training, and every year, we need to provide supplemental service training. So I'm going to be going out to the bus drivers, to the cafeteria workers, and and do separate trainings for them in addition. And there, each year, there are going to be tweaks. I mean, this is a brand-new law, and there is essentially no case law around it. So we're going to need to be able to adjust to those things, particularly around cyberbullying, and how deeply can you reach into a person's home, into their computer, to be able to gather information that becomes part of an investigation.
Right, and so, I'm so sorry, just one other question.
No, it's fine.
With that, so is this now a policy that would be reviewed by the Policy Review Committee?
It's a great question. At this point, the 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 legislation does not require a specific policy for bullying. That is not a requirement imposed to legislation. Our feeling was, because it's tied into harassment, the harassment policy at this point. The question really becomes, do you pull bullying out of the policy after we know? And it's been literally weeks, in some cases, what we have learned about what the expectations of the state are around this. Our feeling was that we had a deadline of December 31st to be able to submit what I identified as, I think, provisional or some language like that. So that it would give us time to say, "Do we really need to recommend to the Policy Review Committee that they consider pulling bullying out of the harassment policy and have it be its own policy?" But there is not an obligation to do that, but it still is a question on the table.
And it's a law that is changing. Today, there was a public hearing held on this by district attorneys to look about how they can strengthen the law. So the landscape is still changing. So that's why we decided with the plan that we would yearly get together to tweak it and change it and upgrade it, depending on how the law has changed.
Well, but I do think that because this is now, because I know you submitted this to the state, and this is here, that it's probably a good reason to have the Policy Review Committee, the next one or the one after, let's just take a look at the harassment policy that's there, and the, you know, the bullying. I don't know if it's up for review for this year or not. I know I haven't seen it come up yet. But because of this, let's just go ahead and and do it. It's a good enough reason now that this is such a substantial change for us to at least take an initial look at it and see if there's any changes. I know that we'll probably look at it again next year, and next year will be the the bus policy that we'll be reviewing every single year. But it's a good policy to review on a yearly basis with all the changes, especially around cyberbullying. So if we can make sure that the Policy Review Committee looks at that.
And I would be happy to come to that, to just say, "Here are the pros and cons and why we, you know, we," sort of the sequence of of events. I mean, literally, this this law, I think it was May 7th, it may be May 3rd. I can never remember which of the two it was that the governor signed. The law became, and the law came into effect on that day that he signed it. And between that time, and they said, "Well, but you've got seven months to to write your polit- your your plan." And two weeks before December 31st, two weeks before the guidelines came out, December, it was 11th, I believe.
You never see so amazing.
So so that's why I, we have just tried to be careful about, you know, not not heading in 20 different directions.
Yeah, no, I think that it's just, it would be just a great practice for us to just take a look at it.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Okay, again, much of the research that I'm going to talk to you about, it comes through Mass Aggression Reduction Center. The 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 students, over six or seven years now, through Mass Aggression Reduction Center, have completed surveys. These are incoming freshmen into Bridgewater State University. So the the, some of the statistics you're going to see is compiled over a six- or seven-year period. The chart that you have in front of you now says that 50% of boys and 56% of girls saw themselves as victims of bullying in their high school years. And 50% of boys and 44% of girls felt that they were non-victims. This is critical, because when I mentioned the importance of us trying to encourage bystanders to speak up, trying to encourage students who feel that they are being bullied to speak up, this this chart is very, very critical. This is a chart of kids' rates of reporting bullying behavior. Red, in this case, red is girls, and blue is boys. So these are the people, if this is going to work for me, these are the people who they might report to. So certainly, a larger number of girls, when I say large, about 18% of girls said that they would tell their parents if they were being bullied, and about 5% of boys said that. Siblings, 5% of boys, about 10 or 11% of girls, about 10% of boys said, "Yep, I'd tell my friends." And about 21%, 22% of girls said that they would tell their friends. 5% of girls would tell the principal. Zero would tell, zero boys would tell the principal that they were being bullied. Same with teachers, same with school adult, you know, roughly those figures. Counselors, about 10% of girls said that they would talk with their counselors. About 2% of the boys said that they would talk to their counselors. But here's the number. It was 67% of boys, of of girls, rather, 67% of girls said that they would tell no one. 83% of boys said they would tell no one. That is the problem.
Bob, again, this is kids that are actually bullied, not the bystanders? Or is this both?
These are victims, that's correct.
These are victims, okay.
Yes. So so the survey says, who would you tell? Would you tell this person? Would you tell that person? So there were, you know, whatever it is, eight or 10 different categories. Would you tell no one? And 83% of the boys said, "No, I wouldn't tell anybody." And 78% of the girls said, "No, I wouldn't tell anybody."
Is the same data available for bystanders on whether, on who they would tell?
I'm not aware of any data through Mark, and I've looked at a lot of their data. So I'm going, I'm going to say, "I don't think so." Only because I've been to four different trainings, and the issue of data collection for bystanders, I just, I haven't seen it. And I actually have their master slideshow, so I will look for that. But I have not seen any on on bystanders. So I'd like to talk about what we've done so far. After the law was passed over the summer, we had an initial administrators' training. We began the public process of plan development through the group, and Donna is here to answer questions about that process. December 15th, we submitted the plan to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for their approval. We put reporting and investigation tools in place. We have a a process for both students who who come forward, and we also have a process for students who choose not to let anybody know that they're reporting. We have put up on the Student Services web page, pages, a specific page for bullying, and there is a great deal of information there. And we'll continue to put that information up and continue to put links up to our partner, Mark Mass Aggression Reduction Center, on that on that link, on that page, rather. We have parent information dissemination. As you know, the there was a brochure that went out. Obviously, tonight is important. February 15th, we have our parent community training in the evening here. And we have put together a draft of an addendum to the district handbook. There is a requirement that we put this in this year. Now, again, the law came into effect May 15th. Our handbooks are printed right around that time, maybe a month later. So we needed to do this by by an addendum, and that will go out in March. The different schools have planned, the principals of the different schools have planned how that's going to go out. But people can expect a copy of an addendum to the district handbook that will will go out. And then for the following year, 11, 12, 2011, 2012, it will be part of the handbook. Investigator training is already complete, and all staff are going to be trained March 1st. You have in front of you the the 11-page document, the Bully Prevention and Intervention Handbook. And I just want to do a quick description of that. Certainly, I'm not going to go through the 11 pages of the handbook. But the the components that need to be in there include, and I think you'll see that they're there, statements prohibiting bullying. I think that this district has done a great job, and their messages, the message, there's a message on the very first page from the superintendent of schools, the chairman of the Wareham School Committee, and a message from the Student Safety Committee, just identifying the positions of those three groups that bullying is prohibited. I mean, that really is the message of each of those. There are procedures for school staff to report bullying, which they'll be trained on in March. Anonymous reporting is available. Promptly responding to and investigating reports of bullying. We have 25, no less than two per building, will be available to investigate bullying, no less than two. And there is, if in the case of a significant situation, we would do some mutual aid work among the different schools. But as we sit here today, 25 people have been trained, 26 if you include me. There are disciplinary sanctions that have been identified. As you know, there are, there have been groups A through D in terms, in our discipline code. Once a student, it has been confirmed substantiated that their bullying has occurred, the process in terms of what to do next for the aggressor ends in terms of discipline, and it shifts over to the discipline, the conduct, student conduct expectations of the school. So there has been a new section, Group E, that's been identified for harassment and bullying issues. And that's already in place. That was done last year in anticipation of our need to be able to have that happen. But there is also disciplinary sanctions for students who falsely report bullying. A student can, if they choose to falsely report something that's going on, you know, they they can be disciplined as well. It's a Group C offense as opposed to a Group E offense. There are procedures for addressing the the victim's need for safety, as well as the bystander. Safety plans, those sorts of things. I was in a meeting today, and 45 minutes of the meeting was spent on, "How are we going to make you feel safer in school so that you'll stay in school?" Very well done. It was at this school, and and I just can't tell you enough about how well people handle things, how sensitively they handle things. But the the issue of making victims feel safe, putting things in writing to make sure that they feel safe, both victims and bystanders, is a part of the of the legislation and part of our plan. We notify parents of both the victim and the perpetrator or the aggressor. That happens after there's been a substantiation of bullying, not before. So and and the exception to that, of course, if it's Friday afternoon, and this happens often, that things happen at 2:30 Friday afternoon.
For vacation.
So in most cases, we would investigate an allegation first, come to a conclusion, and then contact both sets of parents. But our obligation is to contact both and have discussions with them about what happened. If it happens on a Friday afternoon and there's an allegation, we're going to call the parent and let them know about the allegation, just in case something is going to happen over the weekend. We want to make sure that people are aware. We do have in place procedures for notifying law enforcement when it appears to the principal that there may be a criminal element to this. So the first line of defense, as this kind of carries itself out, the first line of defense is the SRO. But the sort of sequence of events is, the investigation occurs, the substantiation occurs, if in fact there is a reason to do that. And if the principal feels, along with the investigator, that it rises to the level that there needs to at least be a conversation with the SRO to see if there may be criminal activity, then they would do that. In the absence of the criminal of the SRO, because she may be off doing something else, the direction is to contact the chief or is designee, and they'll assign somebody. Lately, that has been that if there's a cruiser up in that section of town, they're the ones that will cover that if if Mary is busy with something else. But we've had those conversations. Strategies for counseling are also in place, and again, many of the investigators are also the counselors, and there is some protocol for them to to follow. And finally, professional development, as I mentioned to you, by next year, we need to look at embedding some of the bullying curriculum that is being recommended. And and there are some model ones out there, including Mark currently having, Mass Aggression Reduction Center currently having a K to five curriculum. And they just announced that there's a meeting March 15th, I believe it is, for a 6 to 12 curriculum. So Jan is on top of that, and we're, we'll be looking at those things, as I said, through the instructional leadership team over the over the next month. What to expect in 2011? March 15th, folks, March 15th, 7 o'clock here at the auditorium at the Wareham Middle School. We will have Deborah May from Mass Aggression Reduction Center will begin to speak around 7. She'll do about an hour and a half presentation, leave lots of time.
March or February?
I'm sorry, February 15th, thank you. February 15th. You can come March 15th, but nobody will be here. So come February 15th instead, February 15th, 7 o'clock, Wareham Middle School Auditorium. Deborah May will be the presenter for Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center. And there will be time for parents to be able to answer questions. In addition, people can expect to have the the addendums to the student handbooks come out. And also, in mid-May, there will be a completion of the service personnel training, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and so forth. During the summer, there will be a development of the annual staff training document for the fall. So the principals will have in their hands, when they have their orientations in the fall, a document to be able to use to to do the initial training during all of the orientation things that they do on the first day of school. And hopefully, the K to 12 curriculum will be in place as we go through next year. In the summer, we will review and revise the plan as we need to tweak. And as laws change and as case law tells us, we need to do different things. and as case law tells us, we need to do different things. Questions? This is, actually, this is a good time to, I'm going to stop.
Well, I was just going to say, why don't you finish and then we'll ask all the questions.
Okay. And I'm, and I'm actually done and I asked Donna, I promised Donna that she didn't have to talk too much, but she promised to make me a cake if I didn't. So I'm going to, I'm going to move the microphone over and you can ask any of us questions that you would like and we'll be done.
Okay. Let me start on this side.
Can I make a comment before the question? Yep. All right. I just, I want to publicly thank Mr. Luzon who put this on and as you can see from the detail of the plan, there was an awful lot of work that went into this, a lot of thought, a lot of listening, a lot of working with people. But I don't want anyone to walk away thinking that bullying is gone from life, not just schools, but in life, because unfortunately, it is still here and we're going to have to do an awful lot of work within our curriculum, within the schools. With parents, parents need to parent children. They need to keep control of the access to the internet, smartphones and everything that they can do on them. And people need to learn to be kind to people and that has to happen and it, we can't do it ourselves in the school. It is a total community activity between church and school and community and we need everybody's help. And when I've received a few phone calls where we've handled the item in the schools, parents are still not satisfied and that's the part I want to make sure people understand. We have a problem resolution in place so that Bob then becomes, from the outside, not being in the school, an arbitrator, to listen to the parent and find out what has been done and have a, a second look at it and go back to the school to make sure that all the steps have been followed and that we have the services in place. So, you know, if it doesn't work and people aren't satisfied, we do have another level, just like we do with our harassment policy. And Bob being the Title IX coordinator, this is also felt to him. So I, I just wanted to make sure that was understood before the question.
Thank you for that point of clarity.
Can we start with Jamie? Because I know that she had a question right off the, I mean.
Done. We'll just, we'll get there.
Okay. All right. Jessica, sorry. Okay. First, Bob, I want to thank you and also the committee for all of the hard work that went into this. I, I can't even imagine the discussions that went on in that room just because it's all over the place today. Cyberbullying is everywhere today. So I just commend you for all of the hard work and all the work that went into this policy. I do, just a quick statement, I do think that it's important for adults to lead by example. I see cyberbullying going on today with our own, the people in our community. And it's very, very important that parents as well as community members lead by example to show our children that it's just not acceptable to bully people through any means, whether it's the media or not. And the only other statement that I would make is I would love to see in the media, in the papers, similar to how we, we put the town warrants and getting ready for a town meeting, all of the articles, if they take this document and they publish it. I think that it would just go a long way if you have one or two pages dedicated to the school's bullying prevention plan, so everyone has a chance to take a look at it and maybe it'll do good also in our community, again, leading by examples. Just a couple of questions that I have. One is, I saw a lot in here about annual staff training. As a, my, my former job, when I was a manager, it was a requirement that I had to go through in harassment training on a yearly basis, annually. I had to go through harassment training and then also sign off with HR. Is there a plan to do annual training for students, have this part of the student orientation? And so it's, it's, you know, I know it's going to be in the handbook, but, you know, having a part of the orientation in the very beginning and then having a separate document outside of the student handbook where we're required to sign off around what the bullying policy is.
Part of, and I, Dr. Benovich, correct me if I'm wrong, part of the student orientation is to review the district handbook and the Code of Conduct and so forth, that, that is the opportunity, I believe, as students walk in the door in the fall, to remind them about the components of bullying, remind them of their obligation as bystanders and as aggressors and the teeth, if you will, behind this new thing. This is a new, this is a new piece of legislation. And, and so I think that's one of the opportunities to do that. The second, for example, at the high school level, would be during the advisories, to be able to look at those situations that are bubbling. A lot of the work that we do behind the scenes, and I'm, I say we, but, and I'm not going to include me in that because it may not include me, is to look at, to have a, a pulse of what is going on and use that information during advisories to try to quell situations that come up, intervene and so forth, so that, that, that happens. The other very good thing, I think, about the investigation process is that the, for example, at the high school, I had four people that were trained as bully investigators. They're also in very key roles where they can see what is happening and we want to intervene before we have to investigate. I mean, that's really what our goal is. But, but the, that will be another part of it. The third part of it is the, through the curriculum, and I could certainly, if we had, you know, an afternoon to do this, show you some of the things that are very, very powerful around getting kids to realize how, how, what the impact is, for example, as you're a bystander, you're not doing anything wrong, you're just watching, you're not egging anybody on, you're not doing any bad things, you're a good kid that just is watching and, and being passive in what you do. So the curriculum really is around trying to get kids to step up, to be supportive, to be respectful in ways that allows them to, to stop something. They're an extremely powerful force in stopping things from happening.
And that's why I think, I've seen some visuals, videos that are out there that kind of gives a student a visual on the do's and don'ts, whether it's what you're witnessing, when to get involved, the do's and don'ts around getting involved or what, what it means to get involved. And so I'm hoping that, you know, the communication plan when it comes to students, that that's something that is, continues to kind of grow on all different ways that we can make sure that, that this is in front of students. So then we're, we're taking a proactive approach than what you're saying, you know, what a lot of this is, is identifying and then stopping it, more things around preventing it from happening.
That's correct. And I just want to show you very quickly, I think I can do this quickly, that parents have a great opportunity, a great link, if you look at this page and right up in this corner, Parents in Public, there is just a terrific amount of information. This is the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center that gives great information about how to handle some of those things. Texting tips, when your child is being bullied, cyberbullying, social networking sites, just not only for parent information, but for student information about, about what to do and what not to do.
And there's a link to this from the Student Services page on?
I, I will check. If I did put a link in, I will put a link in.
Okay, great. Just, you know, I, I have several questions, but I can talk to you offline. I want to be able to give other people a, a chance. The, the next, the kind of group of questions that I have really have to do with, how, how are you going to evaluate whether this is working? What is the long-term plan for evaluating if we have the right policy? Have you guys talked about that? And if so, if you can give me just a, a short, a review of, of kind of what that looks like on, you know, how can we, how can we measure whether this is working or not, our communication?
I think that we're going to see it in, in our discipline reports, the nature of the discipline reports, and also just the feedback from the advisors, for example, at the high school, the advisors and the assistant principals at the elementary schools and so forth, to see how quickly things are, are diminishing. The hard data will certainly be through the discipline reports. How many of them are a result of a bullying event?
There's also the survey that goes home to students and parents that asks that specific question about their feelings about how much bullying is going on.
Right. And what was so great about having both of the, be the last thing I say, but it was so great having this presentation come right before the school improvement plans and the surveys, because I think that when taking a look at the surveys, we should take a good look at some of the questions to parents, to staff and students and see if there are any additional questions or if we need to tweak those questions based on what we've, what we've seen tonight.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I do believe also, wasn't our committee going to, we are planning on reconvening again to go over after it's been in place for a while? I don't know, we had said six months or what we'd say.
That's why I love having you and Madonna. You're absolutely right. That is part of that annual review. We asked the committee if they would come back together, look at what we had as data around what was happening and to get their input about as, as members of the PTAs and other parent organizations in town, how they felt things were going with, with the information that we had to give them.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Bob, on the professional development, is the plan for every employee in the school or is this just something for the teachers?
The, the March first training will be specifically for professional staff and parent professional staff, so our teaching assistants along with our teachers. I will, I went through the trainer, trainers thing, so I, I will do the training, a set of trainings for bus drivers, I'll do a set of training for the cafeteria workers and so forth. Clearly I, as much as, time is just so tight that if, if Jeff Taker were to say to me after the first time that I presented, you know what, if you have that in a PowerPoint presentation, if you put some audio behind it and, you know, it'd fit into when I have my bus driver meeting, great, you know, I'm more than willing to sort of make it adjust to what makes sense for those particular departments. School cafeteria workers, I don't know whether nine o'clock in the morning or one o'clock in the afternoon or how you get them all together as a group, do I go from school to school? So I think that whatever those, those directors, those leaders in those different departments say, they, this is what they'd like to see, then I would, I would do that. And the same with the schools too. If they say to me during the first couple of days of school, I'd much rather have you come in and do it, and I can do it, I can be in five schools, doing those three hours and do it, I would do that.
I would imagine that there's a greater chance of the bullying taking place on the buses.
Correct.
Where it is less absence of a teacher present, but also the training should include the custodial staff or anything, because that's usually the case where something like that might take place. I think in the presence of the teachers, students might use a little caution, I'm not sure that happens, so I just want to make sure that everybody is included in that development.
Well, and, and I would also be open to sharing the language, the logic of, for other community representatives, coaches and police officers, you know, to be able to say, look, here's just the language of it, here, here's how it looks different than when every single police officer, every clergy member or every, you know, every single one of those people, when we were sixteen or eighteen or twenty-five, it just looked very different than it looks now. And I can tell you that, that I, I think many of you know that I do counseling and have for quite a long time and that when a, I'm just going to say, a thirteen-year-old young woman who feels that every kid in the school hates her or, and tells her that she's this or she's that or whatever, the devastation is no different than, than the, you know, the days of the dinosaurs when somebody was pinned up against the chain link fence. So it doesn't happen just in school, it doesn't happen just on the streets. It's something for us all to be, be aware of.
My last question is, on the, on the Mark site, you, you showed a section for parents for, I believe, cyberbullying or?
That's correct.
Texting, is the texting to help parents identify the texting or is, is that tied into like a text or tip where that could be used almost in the same lines as they're talking about increase the peace where?
Sort of a, a, a site where you can go to?
I know, yeah, you have down here, you have a webpage, but are there any thoughts of setting up a text line where students can?
Voluntarily. The, the caution with that, and actually this came up through, Dr. Elizabeth Angler is the head of Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center. Somebody asked, almost repetitive, the question that you're asking. And the tricky part of text information about, about a potential bullying event is that if it's anonymous without names, who, when, where, what, even though it's not my own name is, the person who's being the victim. If I don't know who, but I don't, you know, John, John in my, in my class of thirty kids or John, the seventh grader, you know, said he was going to get me after school today and that's all they say on the text message, how do you investigate John? So we tried to design it in a way that we got as much information about the alleged aggressor from the anonymous student so that we had some ability to, some details that we could truly get down to, drill down to where, where that kid was, what was happening, the pattern of two or three or four kids saying, yep, that's the, that's the guy named John who's doing these things to several of us. So there is certainly a value to the text kind of awareness thing. There is a downside to it. Question to Dr. Angler during her presentation. Jessica, you want to say something else?
I know one of my friend's parents, for her cell phone, they had, I'm not sure what company, how much it cost, but the parent actually purchased a, I don't know, like an add-on for the cell phone where they could actually receive all the texts that are sent to and from the, my friend's cell phone.
Really?
So I'm not sure if any parents were interested in looking into that. I'm not sure how much it costs, what company it even was, but I remember my friend mentioning that at one time.
Very interesting.
Hi, Kim.
How would you feel? It sounds like a right of bad.
Well, I don't, I don't text bad things, so.
But Bob, the, the, in a group where bullying is taking place, ninety-nine percent of these phones now have camera options that it's very easy, I mean, if bullying is taking place, it's very easy for me to sit back here and, and take a photo and, and follow that to a, to a anonymous line.
Put it up with you too.
Right. So I mean, there, there are ways that I'm sure you're looking into where it says tools and, and things in, in place, so.
One, and I should have included the slide, I, I saw so many of them, but one of the very, very interesting questions asked of freshmen at Bridgewater State University. How many of you feel, I'm sorry, question to parents, how many of you feel that you are doing a good job monitoring your students' use of the internet? Fifty, I believe it was fifty-nine percent or something like that, in the fifties, high fifties, said, I think I'm doing a great job. They asked the same question.
As a kid.
Students, how many of you feel that your parents are doing a great job monitoring your activities on the internet?
Ten percent.
Two percent.
Two percent.
And do you know what the difference was?
If it had a with the internet.
Kind of a trick question, but it's one of those, oh yeah, smartphones. Parents don't see smartphones as a computer. It's a computer. And so whether they're sitting, even the parent that says, I have, I took my desktop, I took it out of his room, I put it on the kitchen table and for some reason, he's not on the computer at all, but some is in the bedroom with his, with his smartphone, you know. There's just so many things happening so quickly and our perception of the function of telephone, for example, is very different than, than it is, you know. So, so those are the things that are part of education, things that you just wouldn't think about. Jessica, you're next.
I was wondering for the community staff training, would they consist of the same material that would be given to them and if not, what would be different?
Same material as I presented tonight?
Yeah.
No, the, there was actually?
Well, like, would they be given the same information about bullying and taught in the same manner of how to deal with it?
Okay, the, the training that will be done for staff will include an overview of the law, but importantly, their training is going to be how to be the eyes and the ears. ears of an adult in a, in a building full of a lot of kids. So, so their training is really geared to how to be good at, number one, listening, looking, paying attention, but secondly, the steps in intervening. Who do I go to, you know, I'm off to my, my English class, I don't have time, who do I go to, how do I get that information to somebody so that this is, this is stopped? How do I ask kids general questions that give me an idea that I need to move this to the next level? So, it is different, and it is different, certainly different than the training that occurred for the investigators, is certainly different than the, I think, the information that will be provided to students. I think the focus for students, rightfully so, is, or certainly is going to emphasize the role of bystanders. Donna, I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to add?
I just, I would just like to say that it was an honor to work with Bob. He did a tremendous job in leading this group, and I thank him for that opportunity. I think bullying is an issue that is, one of the, outside of education, one of the most prime things that we have to worry about in our schools, and it is so different from the elementary school begins and the list of grades. And the big problem that we had is in, there have to be different areas as the ages grow. As you're talking about the bullying and keeping track of your young people and phones and like this, we're in an age now where once a child is sixteen, they have to be in an every, every meeting, and a parent has, has hands tied in many ways of what they can do. And once they hit seventeen, eighteen, it behooves all of us to work together. I think we've seen in our community what's been going on. A lot of this is because the kids don't have the proper respect for one another, and I think this plan brings forth the respect. The curriculum that Bob alluded to is going to be tremendous. We had samples of that in the meeting. And one of the main things that the curriculum that the children will be getting and the kids will be getting is on respecting one another, and Dr. Vinovich touched on that. It comes from the home, it comes from the community, and it has to come from the schools. And if your kids aren't brought up to respect you and your home, they're not going to respect the teachers, they're not going to respect their other students. So, it comes to teaching respect. And this Mark Plan, which I've been familiar with for many years, many years, and pushing for this, teaches respecting one another, and treating one another like you want to be treated. The plan is, is, there was a lot of, a lot of talk and meetings and blood, sweat and tears, so to speak, that went into this. I think it's a good solid plan, and we will be getting together again to see how it's going. I believe a hundred percent of the committee said they would stick with that.
Yes.
And so, it's not like we're all going to, okay, this is done now, we'll just walk out the door. We all want to see it work, and we want to see it work well. And I thank you, Bob, for including me, and for you, as part of, as part of this plan, as a member of the community. I don't have his child in Wareham Schools anymore, he's now in college, but he did complete thirteen years, all in Wareham Schools, so.
Thank you.
My heart is here, and thank you for the opportunity to serve in this way.
Thank you. Rachel?
Just, not really a question, because I think it's still a little early. I know that as, as this is going to, as it plays out, we get, as it moves along, I think we'll start to, once the feedback comes back from parents and so forth, I'm looking forward to seeing that. I think my biggest question is of bystanders, because I think that's where the power's going to lie. The, the other reality is, I think, when adults are talking, most of the time, kids are only hearing what Charlie Brown heard from all adults in their cartoons. Is there, and I know it's early, is there a plan to try to get a leadership groups in maybe, like even the middle school and the high school, the older kids, that will help to promote getting the information out, either through assemblies or whatever, I mean, whether it be even incorporating kids like in drama to come up with something, that can put the information out there to the student body, to keep reinforcing that, to keep building on that? Do we have a plan, I mean, because I hear the teachers and the, and the, you know, the staff and the, and the education of that, is there a plan to bring up the push for leadership in our kids? Because I think that's where the, the power comes from, in kind of stepping in and, kind of breaking these patterns.
Yeah. My, my answer really has to go from school to school, and also programs.
It's harder with the younger kids, of course.
Peace Builders certainly has that as an element of it. It is really a whole school taking on the responsibility of making schools respectful and using student leaders to be able to send that, send that message out. I think that, like most schools, you can always expand on that. And I think it needs to be flexible, because the situation, the dynamic in a school, my experience in the few years that I've been around education have been, things change, and there's a need at different times to have that looked differently. So, I do think that that is there. I think our best advocates are students, and their energy and willingness and investment in being able to have those things change. Kids don't like it when things aren't going well.
No.
And they do want to know how to make it better. And I think that programmatically, things like Peace Builders and Responsive Classroom and Open Circles, certainly that is a great, to a great extent, what is part of what their interest is.
And the, the other question, actually, Barry, you had mentioned surveys and so forth. What is, how efficient are those? How, how many are actually, how many do we get back? You know, we, I know we send out, what are our numbers for coming back? Because I know it's, it's easy to say a survey, we're going to send a survey out, but if we only get, say, twenty percent back, I don't think it's going to be a good enough. I mean, obviously, parents talking and, you know, word of mouth and so forth is a good feedback.
That's actually going to be in the next presentation on the school improvement plan.
Oh, all right. Okay, then we'll...
We're going to talk about the surveys and random samples.
Then we'll go with that.
But if I can, just quickly, on March eighth, we're going to the Martin Luther King Planning Group, we're going to take our award, our honorees from the last three years, including Joe from last year. I'm going to be invited to the Y for breakfast and a youth forum, to talk about their perceptions about bullying and about violence, to get their opinions that we can use, to try to use that leadership group within the school.
Great. Okay.
Jeff?
Couple of things. One is, something this big, especially despite the hard work that you and Donna and others have put into this, almost always has unintended consequences. Just be alert. Secondly, let me give you a hypothetical. A seventh grader...
You better sit down for this, Jeff.
A seventh grader is bullied by a junior in high school at the Wareham Cinema or Wareham Crossing over the weekend. The seventh grader walks into the homeroom Monday morning and reports this bullying incident to her teacher, his teacher. What would be the response of that teacher to that situation?
That's a, that's a great question, because that is very much a new element to this law. That event that happens Saturday night at the mall, or something similar to that, whether it's cyberbullying or whether it's direct contact, is now an investigatable issue. So, the, the marker for that is if it flows into the schoolhouse the following week or whenever.
But they're in separate schools, they would never interact, in theory, that junior would have graduated by the time the seventh grader got to high school. As I'm reading, reading the bullying shall be prohibited, number two, it almost sounds like this goes, it's a Wareham School policy, it's the law, but I am, I'm trying to imagine how a seventh grade teacher is going to interact, is going to deal with a situation like that, when it involves a student in a different school, that would never see that person within school. So, this notion that it's going to, to quote the language, you know, interfere with the orderly operation of the school, disruptive to the educational process, it's not going to be. So, how would we, how would that fall within the purview of this law?
It, it, it may, because that student may not be functioning, and that student may then draw other students into the issue, and it somehow interrupts what's going on. But just that student not being able to, to continue to function in their, in their usual way, to continue to be educated, is part of it. The law does not differentiate building to building, because there are certainly those districts that have four middle schools, and it could very well happen in that way as well, that they're age-like, but they do go to different schools. So, the, so the sequence would be, that student reports it, that person who it was reported to refers it to an investigator or to the principal, and that person meets with them, and finds out exactly what happened, how the student's doing, how safe the student feels both in and out of school, and are there witnesses? Are there other people that saw this happen? And they can investigate it, and they would then involve the person at the high school, the investigator at the high school, to work with interviewing the aggressor at that point. So, the fact that they're in two different schools really doesn't matter. Where, where it does matter, even if a child has dropped out of school, and the law is specific about this, as long as the student is twenty-one or under, then it is, it is covered by this law. If it's over twenty-one, then it's immediately referred to law enforcement. But that person doesn't need to be in the same school, they don't even need to be in school, they need to be, the key is the impact that that event has on that student.
Talk about broad.
Very broad. And I will tell you that I think the two, the two things that will be challenged, this is my opinion, doesn't necessarily mean that it holds, but I think the two things that will be challenged will be events that happen out of school hours, but also events that happen with, with students that really don't have any reason to be in contact with each other. The outcome may be quite simple, actually. The outcome may be that there is the, the substantiation that bullying did occur, could be that, and the resolution for the victim is that a counselor or a staff member puts together a safety plan for them and says, let's talk about how you could handle that part of your day differently. Could you go a different route? Can we put you on a different bus? Could you meet with this group of friends rather than that group of friends? Just let's talk about some of the possibilities that might avoid that situation for you. And so, it becomes more of a counseling session of, of trying to figure out how that person can structure, structure their lives in a way that that's not there. There's another group of students also who put themselves in those positions, and decide that they're not going to necessarily make the right decision to stay away from those kids, and do need to be counseled to avoid future conflict. Something, there's a phrase that's used in psychology called the provocative victim. And the provocative victim is the person who is victimized, but they often repetitively set themselves up for victimization. It doesn't make the victimization right, it just means that they put themselves in situations that it keeps happening. And so, it is working with those students to be able to get them to make different decisions. One of the obligations of the law is, for example, the children with special needs, that if a child is felt to be by the team either at risk because of past experience to be a victim, or they're at risk to be an aggressor. So, we have some students with special needs who are quite fragile, and we have others who are quite difficult, can be really challenging. For both of those groups of students, we really need to look at the question, do these students need to have some enhancement in social skills interactions, meeting with counselors more often, how do you, how could you handle that differently? Those sorts of questions.
Sounds like what you're saying is, once the governor signed this law, if you're a student in any Massachusetts school, you can be disciplined for being the aggressor, and you can, and you have a right to counseling if you're the victim, even if it's not in the same school district.
The right to counseling, I think you have, I think you have the right to, to a safety plan, which, which may include counseling, and may include some discussions and so forth, but yes, yes, I think that that's true.
It's that broad.
It is that broad. It is really a, a child protection...
A statewide child protection effort.
Yes.
Okay. I have some questions on the reporting procedures. They seem redundant, anyway, but I can take it up with you at another time. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Guess what? I get to talk now. I want to keep it quick, I know time is drawing, and you've got another presentation to make, but there are a couple of things.
I get to drink more water.
Yeah, I know, but there's a couple of things that, a couple of comments and a couple of questions. This is a quick question, only because I don't know. Were there any resources, additional time and training for you in being the spearhead for this policy? Was there any provisions for that given by the state in developing these individual policies?
There were, let me use the right language. There were low-cost opportunities to be provided with training.
For you to be provided with?
Low or no cost, I should say, that were made available, many of them through Mass Aggression Reduction Center, but this is, this is, there is a marketing side to this, and I'm excluding Massachusetts Aggression Reduction.
Okay, that's, that's fine. So, there was some training for you?
Yes.
Okay. But here's the thing that I'm getting, that kind of bothers me a little bit, and I hope you can put me at ease.
Me too.
Was there any provision for providing relief or substitution for your time in developing this plan? Not only with the meetings, and I really, really appreciate all the help that all the volunteers did, but to your time. I mean, you have got a full-time position here. You, you are responsible for a huge part of our budget, and you are the overseer of our special needs program. Was there any provision made to give relief to the district for your time?
No.
See, that's what bothers me about these state mandates. You know, we are saddled with the responsibility to get this done, and it should be done, because it is the law. I'm, I'm not debating whether we should do it or not, but I'm, it's, it's the same old story over and over and over again, that they don't even get the final revisions of the format to you in a timely manner. So, so that increases the time that you have to do in supervising and bringing the group together, getting information, getting input and so forth, it's on. Meanwhile, that's time away, basically, from what we're paying you to do.
Yes.
And that bothers me. You know, it bothers me because no one has the foresight to know that every time this gets passed down to the local level, all right, someone's got to pay the bill, whether it be in dollars and cents or in time. So, just give me my opportunity to be on my soapbox. But I really appreciate this, because I know that you had to juggle a multitude of responsibilities to get this thing done. You know, and that's, sometimes that goes unnoticed. I just want you to know how much I notice it, and I want to thank you for it.
Thank you.
That's not really water in the, in the container.
It's protein powder. It's, it's protein powder.
The other thing that, while we're on resources, the other thing that I think we have to consider is, as we're going through this budget process, as you've heard, we're in ad hoc and we've got the budget process and so forth and so on. And you know as well as I do that we have made tremendous cuts in administration across the board over the last several years. So, right now, our administrative structure is pretty lean and mean across the board. And as this thing, I don't know where this is going to go. I don't think anybody does. But as this thing blossoms, as the investigatory process and the counseling process and all of the service necessary, I think that that is going to be, I'm just guessing now, my little crystal ball, an incredible drain on whatever small resources we have in terms of personnel. I, I, to be quite honest with you, I don't think we've got the personnel to do this in the right way. I'm going to be quite honest with you. I don't think we've got it in administration. I don't think we've got the services available right now that maybe, that may have to be available. And we certainly don't have the resources to pay for it. So, that, that kind of bothers me about the implementation of the law and how we go for it. Because we know as well as I do that in many of these cases, outside counseling is going to be required. And so, where does that come from? It doesn't drop out of the sky. You know, it doesn't come with a check for the town of Wareham. So, I guess that, that bothers me.
May, may I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
Agree with you.
Well, no, I, I hope you would disagree with me. It'll make me, it'll make me feel better. If you said, "No, you're crazy, that we can make this work." Go ahead.
I, I do want to agree with you. And it isn't, there, there, in the last two weeks, I've had 25 people spend two hours apiece getting trained. People who are leaving their roles as counselors, as assistant principals, as people who have other things to do as well. I, I have to tell you, though, that they didn't blink.
And I'm sure they didn't. Because you know what? That's the staff at Wareham.
Correct. And, and that's, that's all I wanted to say was that they didn't blink, but they realized that it's a necessary thing. They realize, as all of you realize, that, you know, we, we are concerned about these things. Bullying and violence protection, prevention and so forth are all in the same umbrella. They, they didn't blink. They just said, "Tell us what we need to do." They, you know, kind of shook their heads and say, "Okay, when am I going to find the time to do this?" But they.
And that has been the history of the professional staff in Wareham Public Schools since I've been on the school committee, that we keep putting things on their plate and they just don't push something off. Somehow or other, they make it work, okay? But you know as well as I do, at some point in time, there's going to be a law diminishing returns. The other thing that I didn't see in the law, and I, I, I'm going to kind of brag a little bit. I had a model peer mediation program down at Sandwich when I was principal. All of my peer mediators were trained. They were, they were, they went back for retraining every month. I had about 15 peer mediators. And long before we had the, the bullying law, okay, we were kind of doing it on our own, ex officio, so to speak, down there. And we found that in terms of providing counseling, that in many respects, we got more from the peer mediators than we did from the adult councils or professional staff. I don't see anywhere in the law where it's going to allow peer mediation to be part of it. Is that true? Or do you think that that might be something that might come down the road?
Now, I think if you, in the counseling section, and you know, there's sort of these, written in vertical form on the left-hand column, the different sections. In the counseling section, you will see, here are the counseling and support interventions that we have in place. So, so peace builders, builders is in there and open circle and so forth.
Okay.
So, so that, that is the area, because they are all the supports.
So, that would be part of the support system?
Certainly, peer mediation being part of them. During the investigation part of it.
No.
It's, it's, right. It's not an appropriate thing.
No, they would never part the investigation.
Right.
But if it was deemed that we had an harassment issue or a bullying issue and we thought that it was a situation that could best be handled through peer pressure and peer mediation, we did that. And the other thing that we, that, that both the aggressor and the victim had to do was sign a contract. And so, it was all, so there was a kind of a word is your bond kind of thing, so. And in the, in the area of shrinking resources, you know, using the resources that are available to us. And, and it's also a good leadership tool for our kids. I found that my 15 peer mediators are very dedicated to what they did and that we use them over and over again. Two more points. One is on surveys. Surveys are only as good as the understanding of the people taking the survey. If parents don't, don't have a clear understanding of what exactly bullying is or, or the provisions of the law, you're going to get flawed results on the survey. And so, that's basically it. You did a fine job. I think it's a great jumping off place. And thank you for your patience in my frustration about the lack of resources being provided at the state level.
May I, just one last word to the, to the parents that may be listening, is that, again, this law requires us to look at bullying as it's identified in the legislation. Please do not think for one second that when an investigator or a principal says this doesn't fall under the category of bullying.
That you're not going to deal with it.
That, that it means that we're not going to deal with it. Of course, we're going to deal with it. We're going to, student conflict is something that these folks do respond to every day. So, it's just going to be great in terms of the relationships between the school and the parents, that there's a job that these folks have to do. They have to substantiate or not substantiate that it fits certain criteria. If it doesn't fit, it doesn't mean we wash our hands and say we're walking away. We're saying we have to handle it in a different format.
Very good.
I want to thank Donna for coming tonight.
Thank you so much, Don.
I want to thank the committee. They were awesome. Nice, nice people. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, committee, for your questions. Very, very good questions. Thank you, Jessica. You were great tonight on this issue. It really was good. All right. You're still up though, Bob, huh?
I am, so I've got about 30 seconds.
Not a problem. Let's all take a stretch for 30 seconds.
That'd be great.
So, I'm not great on any other issues?
I'm not.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Bond, you want to come up?
I think it's tough.
I don't think I remember seeing you.
I have a, at the high school, I'm very good when you push back on the desk.
Very good for that.
Oh, so what happens? What's the next step?
What's the next step?
What's the next step for what?
I, every single time at the beginning.
So, shifting gears, I searched high and low on the internet to see if they had like a school improvement plan rap or something that I could, you know, do as a lead, but it, it just didn't exist. So, we're going to try to, try to beef this up again. Yeah, and I'm not dancing. So, the school improvement plan process really began for us, I think we were sitting on a picnic table in Mashpee High School during the superintendent's meeting, trying to plan out after having the series of school improvement plan presentations last spring and some of the comments of the committee around some of the things they saw lacking in the school improvement plans, the lack of consistency and so forth. So, we, we, we looked at a process of, of seeing what the strengths and weaknesses of the existing plans are, what are our obligations in terms of the regulations around school improvement plans. And, and when I say school improvement plans, please understand I'm including surveys in that because a great source of information is around the surveys. So, we, you know, that's, that's very much part of it. So, what we, what we're going to try to do tonight, I hope, is to first introduce the members of the advisory committee. I want to talk about what we believe has improved in the plans that you, you have in front of you. I want to do a little bit of a summary of the process, including the assessment process that we used from the input of the school committee, the administrative team, the advisory committee, and the instructional leadership team. And Chris, Mike? I think I'm supposed to put the mic up here.
It would help.
Okay. If, you mean if I want people to hear me? Okay. Here we go. So, I also want to go over the review and the revision of the school improvement plan through the use of SMART goals. For those who are saying SMART goals, SMART is an acronym that stands for Specific Strategic Measurable Attainable Results Based in Time Bound. And you'll see from the assessments, Jeff is shaking his head because I actually remember the sequence of words. The, the assessments that we got from all four groups clearly said that we need to be more specific about the things that we're saying, that, that there needs to be a tie between school goals, the district goals, the superintendent's goals, our, our scores, and, and what we're setting up as, as our SMART goal process. I want to present the new formats to you and provide an example and then have a chance for people to ask questions. And hopefully, we'll have answers to the questions that you'll ask. I would also ask you, if you want to stop me as we go, please do that. I'd much rather have you do that than to hold them to the end. So, I want to, a part of what we did was that we asked the school councils in all of the buildings to, actually asked the principals to invite members of their school council. So, we really had a, a group of people who represented several of our schools as school council members. And Bonnie was certainly part of that, as Joyce was. And we had several other people who, who were involved in that group as well. But we had over two, three months, probably four, five, six meetings to be able to review each section of the school improvement plan and each section of the surveys. Surveys meaning staff surveys, student surveys, and really, really four sets of student surveys, depending on age. Okay? So, I got the group there. I think I have little yellow post-it notes that nobody can read my writing on. But what it talked about was that the, the task of the advisory group, several tasks, was first of all, to gain an understanding of the school improvement plan process, regulations, legislation, review the existing tool, what we had in place now, assess what is valued in school improvement plans, what do we value in, in what we've put together year after year. Thank you very much. And assess, recommend revisions to the plan template and recommend, recommend areas to be included in or deleted from the current surveys based on the information that we got from, from the assessments. So, that's what we asked the advisory group to do. It is also what we asked the administrative team to do as we did this, this process over several of the administrative team meetings, including one of them during the summer at the, our summer leadership retreat. I wanted to take just a couple of minutes. I'm not going to go through the whole law, but I just wanted, as a point of reference, to kind of go over what the components of school improvement plans are and what the law says about it. So, I'm not going to read all of it to you. But the, but the idea is that the school council, including the school principal, shall assist in the annual school budget and in the formation of a school improvement plan. The principal, in consultation with the school council, develops and submits for approval a plan for improving student performance. So, that's one of the charges of a school improvement plan. Annually, the principal, in consultation with the school council, adopts student performance goals. They formulate a plan to advance such goals and to improve student performance. Again, purpose of school improvement plans. The school's plan to support improved student performance shall include, but not be limited to, an analysis of students in subgroup achievement gaps, specific improvement objectives, description of strategic initiatives, performance benchmarks, processes for evaluating and improving initiatives. And the plan needs to be submitted no later than July 1st. School improvement plans, as described in legislation, have the following elements. Assessments of impact of class size, student to teacher ratios, ratios of students to other support adult resources, plans for reducing class size if deemed necessary, professional development, parental involvement, safety and discipline, school environment, extracurricular activities, and a means for meeting within the regular education programs. Means for meeting within the regular education programs at the schools that diverse learning needs of as many students as possible, including children with special needs currently assigned to separate programs. Now, if I could like sort of embed that in your head for a couple of weeks, that phrase is very important, because we're going to have conversations about response to intervention, that this phrase is extremely important as you look at how we're functioning and the provision of instruction for kids in school. So, I'm going to read it one more time quickly. "A means for meeting within the regular education programs at the school that diverse learning needs of as many children as possible, including children with special needs currently assigned to separate programs."
Bob?
Yeah?
You plan to make a presentation on response to intervention. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
For everybody's sake, including the citizens who are listening, when do you, I consider that to be a very important presentation. When do you plan to do that?
I believe March 9th.
So, it'll be sort of RTI 101, Response to Intervention 101, to, to begin the process of doing that. As we're looking at the same thing, and we'll talk about this on the 9th, if that's the date, that we're, we're working with a group to, Teachers 21, to be able to have, hopefully, our April 6th meeting in Service Day afternoon, where that would be exposed to all teachers as well. But, but that, I'm getting into the March 9th.
101 because it would be too lengthy to make it 102?
101 because you. 101 because you need 101 before you get to 102. You know, it, so much of this, so much of school improvement plans, so much of bullying legislation is making sure that people are talking the same language, they have the same understandings. You could, if you Google RTI, you'll get a million and a half hits and there will be almost as many versions of what different publishers feel is the right one.
Okay, good. March 9th.
March 9th.
Okay.
Okay. It also should involve, any further subjects, the principal in consultation with the school council shall consider appropriate. So what has improved? What you're going to see, I believe, in the plan that you have in your packet, in the surveys, some of the things that we did that we believe were positive things, we, meaning the school council group that met, the administrative team as they reviewed it, is that we have tried to universalize the questions, at least the first 10 questions that are asked across the district. We had too many questions that were being asked that weren't necessarily, you weren't able to measure apples to apples and so forth. So the agreement was that we would have 10 universal questions. Now, those 10 universal questions may change year to year, but we're asking some of the questions on the survey that are the same across the district. We may ask them a little bit different for second graders than we do for 12th graders, but we want to know things like safety and so forth, how people feel as they come into school. Beyond the 10 universal questions, there's an opportunity for the survey, for principals, building level initiatives to be surveyed as well. So if the DECA's school has started a new math program and they want to know, how do people feel that this is going? How do students feel? How does staff feel? How does, how do the parents feel? They have the opportunity to do that as a DECA's group. There's a common format for input that, that everybody has the opportunity to, to provide that information at the same time, in the same format, and likely, hopefully this year, an option to be able to e-survey that as opposed to have that on paper. The truth is, some people will not fill out a paper. They're more likely to jump on the internet and complete a survey online. So we hope this year, certainly next year, to be able to do that in a way that, that people will have the option of doing their surveys in those two, in those two formats. The plan itself, so there are the surveys and there's the plan. What has improved in the plan is that there are direct, specific ties to district committee and superintendent's goals. Every single goal page has a tie to those. You have to explain how it ties to the initiatives of the district, the initiatives of the superintendent. We have adopted the SMART goal format in that goals need to be, before they are really goals, they really need to be specific, they really need to be strategic, they really need to be measurable, you have to, they have to be attainable, and they're results-based and they have to be time-bound. If they don't meet that test, they're not a goal and they shouldn't show up on a school improvement plan. But our expectation will be that goals truly have those characteristics about them or they're really not SMART goals. They're really not goals that we want to see as the driving force behind the initiatives that we, that we move forward with in the district. That there's a universal format for all of the data, that you will see charts that are the same charts whether it's Minnet's school improvement plan, whether it's DECA's school improvement plan, whether it's the middle schools or the high schools. Now, the middle school and high school, obviously you're going to have more information around discipline and dropout rate and those sorts of things, but we're using the same sources. So if it is the DESI website, if it's the DOT program that has a certain chart, that's the one that is there. And you'll see in a little bit that there's actually, it identifies within the SMART format that there's a certain expectation that you're going to use this chart. Now, I didn't say you folks use this chart. We sat as a group, the administrators, and said, here are the data sources that we want to insert into the SMART goals so that they are all the same, they just are different from school to school. But as you review goals this spring, you will see the same format for the, for the data sources that we use.
How do you decide if something is attainable?
Um, I think, I think it's the criteria. For, for me, if a goal is attainable, attainable means that I see something happening, that I have a goal, I have an end product or a piece of an end product that, that I believe that we can have the funds for, that we have the time for, that we have the resources for, and that it's important, that it is, in the impact feasibility study of it, it's a high-impact, a high-feasibility activity that we need to do. Now, the, the, the goal may be one that people say, you know what, this is not attainable because there's too much here to do in a year. My next question is, what part of it is attainable? Because it's too much for a year is not an answer. I want to know what part of it's attainable, what, what do we need to push aside, readjust, provide for because it's a high-impact, high-feasibility item that we have to make it attainable? What, what do we need to put in place in order for that to be able to happen? So if we say, all teachers should have 36 hours of training in response to intervention because that's the right way to start, then my job is to figure out how, how do you make it attainable? Because, because it means, you know, 150 teachers need to have 36 hours of training. How are we going to do that and keep, keep in business while we're doing that? But it's an important thing. We've agreed that it's an important thing.
Most, most of our senators and representatives and the President of the United States decided that by 2014, every student in this country would be proficient in English and math. That was according to these highly intelligent representatives that we elected, an attainable goal.
I would have had to have disagreed with the superintendent.
Intelligent by what measure?
So.
That's a faulty premise.
So that was not an attainable goal by your definition.
If.
Because it was too aggressive.
It's attainable.
It was too aggressive, it was too aggressive for it to be doable. Attainable is, includes, I guess doable is a subset of attainable. Something needs to be doable. That doesn't mean that it's easy. It doesn't mean that people say, yeah, I guess we could fit that in. It means that there may need to be, there may need to be some tweaking around funds, around people, around time to make it attainable. But if we believe that it is important, then we have to do everything we can to make it attainable.
Bob, can I just add on to that? Because you and I discussed this many times, that within the SMART goal format, the two pieces of the SMART goal format that I think are most important are the action items and then how you're going to measure whether you've attained those action items. I think every good exercise in SMART goal creation is to come up with your goal, have it aspirational, say that you're going to have every single student, you know, proficient by, you know, 2014. And then you go right to what the action items are and then how are you going to measure those? And after you come up with those two things, you go back and you take a look at your goal and say, is it really attainable based on our action steps and how we're going to measure it? And that's the exercise that I'm really hoping, and so later on my questions are going to be about training and, but that's, I think, one of the most important things that you, one of the things you have to do in this and that this format allows schools to do is let's come up with our goal, let's set our action items, how we're going to measure that, and definitely let's go back. And I think that, that's going to help us when looking at the whole entire format, make a judgment call on whether it's attainable or not and challenge it.
And I believe part of that is actually the next bullet, and that is that assessment of progress needs to be transparent and measurable because that is part of attainable. Do we have a history to let us believe that a goal is attainable because of what's, what, what progress we see? And truly, has it been, has there been progress? And if there hasn't been progress, then we, we need to do, we need to shift, we need to change what needs to happen in order for it to be attainable. Why say something's attainable if we're going to have the same results next year? Okay.
Go ahead.
Finally, goals are tied to action steps, timelines, measures, and funds. So there is a flow. We can't say we want to do X unless we've said, we want to do X, here are the steps, the action steps that need to occur, here's the timeline, here are the indicators, here's the measure of how, what it'll look like to decide whether in fact that we've been able to attain it, and here's the funds for us to do it. But we cannot say, this is really what we need to do, but we can't pay for it, so it's, it, you know, it's just not really a goal. The, the whole sequence of those things need to be part of the decision that something truly is specific, strategic, measurable, attainable, results-based, and time-bound.
And Bob, I'm sorry, just one more column.
Yeah, sure.
The right thing for those elected officials to do is to come out in 2011 and basically say, you know what, maybe we weren't right there. So we're going to tweak it a little bit. And I think that that should also be part of this process is the check-in all along the way to basically say, did something come up? Has, has the environment changed? You have to constantly keep evaluating what your goal is. And you know what? Call it out and say, you know what, I need to make this change right now. And I think that's a very, very important piece of school improvement plans to, you know, constantly evaluate and tweak if you need to, to make sure that you're, you know, meeting whatever the overall goal is.
I don't disagree with you, but I'm also sitting here thinking that if the actions, if you're sitting here and you're trying to get here and you've been sitting here for a decade, unless your actions are dramatically different than the prior decade, then the goal is meaningless. So I think you're 100% right. It's the actions combined with the measurement of the impact of those actions that, that make this a meaningful process. Absent actions that are different from the status quo, just because you have a feel-good goal is irrelevant.
I'm going to change the fuel pump on my car as my goal. The action is knowing that I've got to remove the radiator, that I've got to get it done first, that I've got to be able to have the right tool. You know, it, the, the, I absolutely agree with you. The goal by itself has no teeth behind it. The actions have teeth behind them because those are the things that need to happen to make that goal occur. And, and that's really what, in my opinion, and more than my opinion, those are the things to be assessed. We agreed that here are the actions, here are the five things that we need to be able to do, is the timeframe, here's what our expectations are around what it'll look like when it's done, here's how we're going to put it to the test, what are the measures, and how are we going to pay for it? But before you do all of those things, it's not a goal. It's not, it's not anything until you've been able to answer each of those items because it isn't one question, it's five questions.
The Governor has filed legislation to make school improvement plans once again something that we have to approve. I can guarantee you, and I, and I applaud the work that you're doing on this, but if I, if I see goals that aren't matched by, I'll call radical actions, different actions, I'm going to vote against the school improvement plan. Because it's just, it's just another piece of paper that, that will have no meaning and it won't be worth the time. I mean, there's a part of me that says, you don't have a significant percentage of your parents, God bless these two people that are here, but if you don't have a significant percentage of your, of your parents behind the plan, it may be dead in the water to begin with, but that's another story and I'll save that for later.
And there are two parents here, but they're powerful.
Not none of here, some of the teachers here.
Oh, well, even better. Okay, let's move on.
Bob, can I, can I stop you for a minute?
Yes.
Just because I want to move on. I know you said we could interrupt you and, you know.
Absolutely. No, I'm, I would much rather.
But I would prefer that you get through it and we write down our questions and get you at the end. Because I just think, because it's getting really late.
Okay.
So why don't you finish your presentation and I ask the committee, just to jot down your answers, we'll get to the end. I might go a little bit faster. Go ahead.
Okay.
No. Go.
Can't jot down your answer. It is such a question.
Oh, you're questioning. Okay, go. How do we measure two things? How we are doing and what needed to change? That was what we looked at in the survey outcomes. So the existing school improvement plan process was looked at through an assessment, not an assessment tool, by four groups, school committee, administrative team, school improvement plan, and the instructional leadership team. Seemed like a good group to look at. Here's what we found. So there are several sections to this. The purpose, what's the purpose of the, of the school improvement plan? These are the needs that people saw around these categories of things like what really is the purpose. The administrators felt that there needed to be a better planning process around identifying that. The school committee sees the need for improvement and the ability to demonstrate accountability to the public and to demonstrate that information to the community. There's a need for universal understanding of the purpose of the school improvement plan, universal understanding, so that everybody knows when we're sitting at various types of meetings and they say, well, the score is this and the score is that, that they, they really understand that the school improvement plan is really the driving force behind the activities that happen in the school. Around data analysis, that PR, you know, PR kinds of activities need to show the positive things that happen in the school. That there's a need for check-ins of progress in school improvement goals, so it doesn't just sit on the shelf, but there's actually a process of checking in on a regular basis to see how it's going. And there's a need to focus on differences between actual and desired performance, and that really is what falls into the growth model. Around the improvement goals themselves, there was a feel that there was a need for there to be clear goals that are strategic, specific, measurable, attainable, results-based, and time-bound. Accountability is important, but lacking the who, what, when, where, and how it's measured within the plan itself, that is. That, that school improvement plan goals need to be quantifiable, they need to be realistic. Around improvement activities, professional development is needed for school improvement plans so that all stakeholders understand it. School improvement plans need to be realistic in regards to resources, timelines, expectations, and we need to connect best practices with school improvement plan goals. These are the comments of those four groups. Around implementation of school improvement, there needs to be greater involvement and ownership of school improvement plan process by staff. Regular review of the school improvement plan is needed. It should be the reference document for actions. There should have a survey completed early in the year, have the surveys rather, completed earlier in the year so that the, the data can be used in the development of the plans. In terms of involvement and communication, collaboration between the principal, school council, and larger organization is essential. There's a need to explore the, the need for a planning group to monitor the progress of the school improvement plan. A group looking at, such as the instructional leadership team, looking at the school improvement plans and say, is it, is it working? Are you doing what you said that you were going to do? These are the top items, it says 10, but they really weren't 10, top items that need addressing in this revision. The belief of the group in conclusion, the advisory group, was that there, that writing goals in SMART goal format had to happen. There was a need for continuous monitoring and evaluation of school improvement, a need for planning and monitoring team for that purpose. Staff involvement in the plan development and implementation needed to occur. It couldn't be happening outside of them, they needed to participate in it. The connection in universal format among all components of the school improvement plan is essential. Surveys, goal-setting, data collection, monitoring of progress, et cetera. And finally, school improvement plans should tie directly to the district and the superintendent goals, superintendent's goals. So this is the report card. These were the things by statute, as you see on the left-hand column, oh, you won't see by this pointer, I guess. But on the left-hand column are the, by statute, and then through district review, those were the areas that were seen as areas that we needed to be able to focus on. So that is the presentation of the school improvement plan. What I would like you to, if you would please, if you would take out the.
Instrument?
The actual plan. The actual plan. You have a copy of the school improvement plan. And what I would like to do is, I have a copy of a plan up here also, and what I've done is I've highlighted some of the areas for you. So, I don't know how you're doing with reading that. Does it seem to be in focus? Folks, like from over here, I can't tell. You might want to wiggle stuff if you need to. Okay. So, I just want to go through page by page. Mine looks just a little bit different than yours because I've highlighted some things. You'll see some things in red, but it's, you have the format, you have the template. I've inserted some things into, into the template. So, on the first page, the components that we've talked about is to, to on, right on the front, define the purpose. Provide a small picture. So, where that picture is, and of course, it's the picture of Wyhame Middle School, but to actually, you know, everybody, everybody just puts the same picture in and, and you should always bring a pointer that has a good battery. So, but you, you want it to be the same, the picture, the, the members of the school council should show up on the, on the first page. The mission statement, the strategic goals of the Wyhame Public Schools as identified by the strategic plan, as well as in this year, there's the consolidated goals of the Wyhame School Committee. And then there is a sign-off, very first page, people signing off their assurances. People meaning the principal, the school council, the head of the school council, the superintendent in the school committee. But the idea is for everybody to be able to agree, "This is the goal for the school. We've reviewed it and we're in support of it." Now, this is where your copy is going to look a little bit different than mine because I've inserted some of the data items that, that we're going to use. This is simply a copy and paste. We've included, you'll see in yours, I believe it says, "Insert such and such a chart here." So, under, under the very first section, "School-wide data enrollment," I think you see something that says, I don't have it in front of me, but it says, "Insert, insert school enrollment data here."
DESI enrollment data chart.
So, it, it actually, there's just in parentheses and in italics, I believe, it says, "Insert DESI enrollment data chart here." Put it in. Insert DESI mobility rates chart here. It just, so you're looking at apples to apples. It's the same information, school to school, that you're, that you're looking at. The second, very important part, and yay, I think it's working, is as you go down the page, and this is central to the way that this has been set up, after you've looked at enrollment items, then what you want to be able to do is, right here, it says, "Impact statements related to data." The idea of this is to, to take data and then for various groups, the school council, the principal with their staff, to be able to look at that data and say, "What is the impact of this data?" Because those impact statements should really be considered when you're looking at, "What are we going to do about this?" But if you're looking at data, you need to be able to identify the impact of what it is that you're seeing in that data. And this is the opportunity for people to identify, here is what the impact of that data is. So, as I'm preparing to develop my school improvement plan, I'm relying on the principals, the school councils, the staff's reflections on what that data tells us. And so, you'll see that repeated right along when we're talking about attendance and discipline, mobility rates. These are charts that, that I have, you know, that I've used, I've put in here. I didn't, and again, I didn't put them in there. The administrative team sat down, they said, "Yes, let's use this chart, this chart." We did this whole thing. We had charts all over the place. We had examples of, of what those data sets are, and people came to consensus about, "Yes, let's use this one, let's use this one." So, you see the same kind of thing. When it comes down to looking at impact on dropout rates and discipline, you're going to be making, there are going to be impact statements that are going to be the result of evaluating the data around discipline and dropout rate by multiple groups. With me? And, and so it goes. Impact statements related to staff data, impact statements related to student performance. So, here's the adequate yearly progress summary that happens to be one that I put in here that was one of the ones that they wanted to include, but you'll, you also see right here, it says, "Insert DESI percent of students at each performance level chart here. Insert the MCAS student growth report here. Insert the MCAS results by subgroup, by grade, and then subject, all grades English Language Arts and all grades math charts here." So, those are the labels of the charts that are available on the DESI website, so that everybody's dropping in the same charts, so that when you look at the plan, you're going to be looking at the exact same data sets. And again, impact statements related to student performance would, and this, of course, grows as, as you need to have it grow. There's a requirement in the law, as I showed you in the first slides, for, for information about parent and community involvement, and we've put a place for it here in impact statements related to parent and community involvement. Same with extracurricular activities and multicultural activities, there's a requirement to have those identified in the school improvement plan, as is the case for professional development. So, there, there are places for people to both include the principals and, along with their school councils, to input information in each of those areas and to, to really spend some time looking at impact statements from what that data tells them. The next section of the school improvement plan, as we have developed it, is a summary report for the current school year. So, if you think about it, the things that you want to be able to look at are, here's the data, whether it's student performance, whether it's parent involvement, you want to look at that. And, and the second thing you want to look at is, "How did we do in last year's school improvement plan?" And that's what this is about. So, the summary report for the current school year, "How did we do? What are the questions that you're asking with this are? What areas of needs or targets, the indicators, were actually addressed? What did you actually address? What were the specific and strategic activities that you did to address it? And was the target attained within the timeframe of the plan? What is the measurable evidence that you were successful or not successful? And how will you sustain it and engage all stakeholders going forward if it was a high-impact activity? If you did something that's really, really good, you need to answer, "How, how are you going to sustain it?" So, this is sort of the report card of how things went in your prior school improvement plan, prior year. Okay? So, the pieces of information you have before you start to develop your, your new school improvement plan is the data that you have in those multiple sets, and an assessment by impact statement of how you did in the past school improvement plan. So, that's, that's the information that you have in front of you before you begin to develop your school improvement plan for the next year. So, the next part of the plan is looking at the SMART goals for each area. You'll see that the very first SMART goals page has to do with student achievement. You will also see that there are two things on here, but the first, the first goal will always be, everybody's plan, the first goal that will be addressed is around student achievement, and the SMART goal will read exactly the same. Student achievement in grade blank will improve at, or maybe grades blank will improve in the areas of blank is demonstrated by increase of blank percent in performance based on the following data sources. There is an opportunity for a description of what the activities are going to be, and also importantly, what the connection is with the district and the superintendent's goals. So, here's what we intend to do around achievement, and here's, here's how it ties to the district and the superintendent's goals. And the format is, this is the general goal, but very importantly, as Rhonda was saying, the indicators, what are the areas of needs that need to be addressed? This needs to be very specific. This is really the meat of what the school improvement plan is because the indicator and the action are the things that say, "Here's what needs to be addressed, and here's what we're going to do," very specifically. Timelines and targets, what are the attainable results that are anticipated in, in the related timeline to be able to complete those attainable results? And what will quantify the progress, the measures, what will quantify the progress in those areas? And finally, what are the funding sources? How are you going to be able to do it fiscally? Where's the money going to come from? Is it grant money? Is it LEA money? Is it in your, in your school's budget? Is it in the curriculum budget? Those are the questions that need to be there. You need to think about the money as well as the time and timelines and the actions and indicators that you're going to do. So, the very first goal is the achievement goal, and then subsequent goals are those that are focused on the results of your assessment of the data from the beginning of the school improvement plan, as well as your assessment of how you did in the, in the past year.
Want me to start first?
And these folks are more than willing to answer anything you want them to.
I do like SMART goals. And please excuse me, I am getting sicker as the night goes on, so my voice is getting lower and lower. I'm going to start sounding Jeff pretty soon.
That's a scary thought.
I know. A couple of things, I, I think I'll start off with the format, and I mean, I, I got to spend time in the very beginning, and I just, I want to thank Bob and also the entire committee for all the work. I mean, I remember in the very beginning and, and going through all of these and the data, and I just, I'm, I'm so proud, pleased with the format that's come out of this, and I can't wait for the, the principals, the teachers, the, everyone to kind of get behind these plans, and especially, once we get for our first year with them, really seeing and being proud of what we've been able to accomplish. And I think that when we, when I first was part of the committee and, and saw the school improvement plans, not that, not, there was a ton of amazing things going on, but at least coming on new, I never got to see it in black and white. And I just, I, I'm hoping that this format gives everyone an opportunity to really take a look at and feel proud of, of what's been accomplished over that year. Bob, the first one, the first question that I have, just on the first page, I'm here when it's having, underneath the assurances and you're asking folks to sign off on it.
Sure.
The second one, the first one said this plan will, will, was prepared in cooperation with the school council and represents, and you're asking for the principal to sign off. The second one, should that go from school council to principal? Because you're asking the school council to sign off and, in collaboration with the principal.
Yes.
Correct, okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that, okay. I'm, I think like the bullying plan that we saw earlier today, I just encourage everyone that's looking at this, that this is the, the first shot, and it is going to continue to be tweaked when schools actually getting, get into putting things into this format. And so, I, I do think that things are going to change, and maybe language will be tweaked and things like that, but I, I definitely do think it's a great first start. I'm very, very pleased to see the first goal and that it's going to be universal across the board, that achievement is going to be the first goal, and that the language is going to be exactly the same, and all someone really has to do is put in their, you know, what they're, by, by what percentage they're going to increase. And I do agree with you, Bob, that the indicators are going to be very important, school by school, what they do, or what they, what they put in as indicators. The official rollout of this, we, we got one presentation from Principal Palladino where he did have his, he revised it and had the goals in this format, and then we had another presentation where it wasn't in the format. When is the official rollout slash training? I mean, when should this committee start seeing all the goals put into this format?
We're going to do the training within the, the, within the month of late February, March now, I guess. And that, but, so the school councils and the principals have the opportunity to be able to use it. I think that would, in the presentation in the spring of the school improvement plans, it will be in this format.
In the spring, okay. So, the, pretty much the 2012-
Yes.
-school improvement plans will all be in this format?
Right. Being official when they come before us.
Okay.
I think the point of discussion will just be how we present the progress in the existing year, and we just have to have that conversation.
Yeah, just so there's a similar format, because, I mean, it was great to see the first presentation of the SMART goals, but I understand if everyone doesn't have the training, then it's going to be very difficult, it'll take too much time for them to put this in the, in that format. So, if, if we're talking about spring, what type of, I, I understand that you have the, the first training, but what about the review? As you know, moving from one format to the other, there's, there's, there's not a comfort there going into this, and it's very difficult to get used to this format. Will there be different stages of review that come out of it? So, then they're getting their feedback from you or the superintendent. I, I just, I do think that's a very important piece to, to the success, is that you do build in several stages of review before it comes to presentation here.
Yeah, I think, I think within the administrative team, we need to have a, a, a sequence of, of reviews that I, I, what I anticipate is going to happen with this, and I may be totally wrong, is that people will get 90% of it, and 10% of it is going to be a major culture shift, and they're going to struggle with it. Not because of the people we have or anything else, but just because it is a substantive change of saying, you know, "This is the win and the how and the what, and, and, and it's pretty black or white." So, I think that what we'll find at the beginning is people just simply need to have a sense of, and they're beginning, beginning to have a sense of what this means in terms of how they have to think when they write the goals, both the principals and the school councils. But, but then there are going to be those pieces, for instance, the indicators. You know, I, I, you know, that's a very important part to me. The action steps are a very important part to me, that, that people have to have, have it be definitive. It, it really needs to say something, and it does have to be attainable. And, and there are times when, in, in all of our training, we learn, "Goals are lofty." You know, make goals lofty, but there wasn't anything else attached to lofty that said, "Okay, now that you made it nice and lofty, you know, what's realistic? What are you going to do with this? What are you going to get it done with? Challenge it." And I can see myself, I can see Barry and I, you know, really saying to people, "Convince me." You know, convince me that that's an attainable goal, because it's not feeling attainable to me. And if it's not feeling attainable, then you, you need to go back to the drawing board because you don't want to set yourself up with something that just, you, you kind of know it's lofty, and, and what do you need to have there to make that less lofty?
One recommendation, and of course, I know you guys are probably committied out, so I apologize for this recommendation upfront, but after the school councils have a chance to present kind of like their first draft, would it, could it be an idea to kind of bring the committee back together with a representative from each one of the school councils? And I know that we did have one from each, but let's look at each others. You know, have each one of the schools come together, take a look, and see if, if everyone is kind of on the same page, and use that as an opportunity to provide feedback on a peer level before, you know, in addition to working with you and working with the
I would be fine with that.
We have good water.
We did. The cookies are missing. You've got to have cookies.
Chocolate.
I think it's going to be easier, actually. You know, one of, because I teach math here at the middle school, one of my favorite goals that's been on every school improvement plan since I've been here is SMART boards in every math classroom. And I know that that's not attainable because the funding is not there for that. But we put it on year after year after year, so maybe the goal this year is, just as an example, maybe the goal is that we somehow purchase one. So, I think this is going to be actually easier. And so, if we all got together one day, I don't feel like having just me- And so if we all got together one day, I don't feel like having just me personally represent the school council, I would think it would need to be me and Mr. Gilmore.
Right.
You know, if you were going to have a meeting like that.
But another good example of an action step, when you know that that goal is unattainable, is that for one year, or one of those steps for the first half of the year, is to seek funding.
Right. I personally like that goal, by the way, just as a math teacher, I like that one, but...
But definitely using peers from each one of the schools to kind of look at how each one of the schools are doing it might be able to help improve the overall goal setting You and I talked about this before, but I just don't remember what the answer was, and I apologize, is that will there be an instruction sheet that goes along with this that talks about how, like, how often to review it, how you should review it, things like that, just so there is a constant check-in point throughout the year?
We began to do that in our discussion as I brought the final draft from the council back to the administrative team, and we talked about it as part of the training and workshop around their application of it, that we had to get a marker of the how and the when of the check-ins.
All right. And then my last set of questions really have to do with, and again, you and I talked about this, about district, that these have to be specific or tied to the superintendent's goals, the district goals. I definitely want to see what the next level down is for the school improvement plan. So how do individual goal setting, lesson plans, how does that tie into the school improvement plan? So there's now one more level down, because district goals only are as important as the superintendent's goals, superintendent's goals only as good as the school improvement, and it trickles all the way down, that you need to be able to have a plan all the way down to the individual level. What are your plans on the next step there? I know that there are some things that are going on, but to tie individual plans, lesson plans, whatever they are, to the school improvement plan, so then really it ties it all together.
One of the things in our committee that we've been working on for evaluation, in our pilot, there is an actual professional development plan that each individual teacher works on, coming up with their own goals, that have to be aligned with the district's goals and the superintendent's goals, so, and the school goals in that individual school. So that's how it's going to tie back down all the way to the individual teacher and to lessons and their own professional growth.
Okay. The only thing that I would ask is that, I feel that professional development goals are something that I'm going to do for me personally to better perform my job, and individual goals that are tied into the school goal, I would kind of want to see that separate, if at all possible, just a recommendation. So that, I mean, at least that's what I'll be looking for and probably pushing for, is that I just, I see professional development as part of how I'm going to help my school achieve the goals that they've set and the district has set, different from what am I going to do personally to achieve, to be able to do my job. Might be just professional development, it might be a different term.
Well, the other thing that ties into it is, and I think that the four groups that looked, that did the assessment, really said that to make a tie between school improvement plans and shared ownership was an important part of it. How do we have the teachers and the specialists and so forth, the custodians, you know, how do we tie school improvement to their day-to-day life? You know, it's, school improvement plans across the country have been documents that were created annually, put on the shelf in many cases, and the need to be able to have it be a live document that is involved for the teaching staff as part of what they're looking at, and how they structure their types of activities and volunteerism and work. So, you know, I think that's all part of what really came out of those four groups, and that is that the ownership of it, shared ownership is important, and how to do that is a question.
Yeah, I'll, we'll talk more about that piece. I don't think I explained myself correctly, so I'll give you a call.
Or I didn't answer it right.
Kenny?
Could I, I'm sorry, could I interrupt? Would you mind if I excuse myself at 10:00? I really should go and get my kids home, so I hope you don't mind.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joyce. Thanks, Joyce.
The kids thank you, too.
Sorry, guys.
Bonnie, I'm Jeff.
Nice to meet you.
You've got me thinking about the SMART board issue, because to me, there's a perfect example of what I, as a school committee member, want to fight for if the school improvement plan connects that purchase, that expenditure, to an achievement, to an action plan and a goal. So, for example, if you said to me, our, the average CPI for the three grades in our middle school was X, and if I got, I don't know how many SMART boards you need, 10, 5, whatever the number is, then our action plan to improve that CPI by five points, whatever the number, is that much more attainable, along with regular connecting with parents of the kids who are not proficient, along with changes to the curriculum, along with more time on test, I don't know what they are, you're the teacher, I'm not, but a series of actions that would get me to a specific goal that is measurable, quantifiable, and I, as a school committee member, would look at that and say, great goal, action plans that make sense, that are different from what's happened in the past, and it requires an investment of X dollars. Certainly, the first time you presented that goal to me, I would be absolutely wanting to write a check and get the town to, and advocate for the town to write a check. Now, the next time, if you failed in achieving that goal, then I'd want to know why. Did I not get you the money for the SMART boards? Did you not connect with the parents? Did you do a bad job implementing the curriculum, whatever it was? But I don't want you to change that goal. I don't want you to, because if you believe, as a math teacher in the middle school, that SMART boards are going to pay for themselves in student achievement, then you have a responsibility to ask for them.
Well, I also served on the technology plan committee, and am fairly technology competent. And to me, that's not a good school improvement goal. A good school improvement goal...
I'm sorry, what isn't?
To buy SMART boards.
No, but increasing the CPI by...
But, to me, a good school improvement goal is that we would meet the technology standards set out for 21st century students. That's a good SMART goal. And the purchase of SMART boards, or the purchase of document cameras, or whatever the technology is needed to meet that, that's a good school improvement plan goal. But until we started doing this process, I would not have thought of it that way. To me, the goal is to have it, because I know how I'm going to use it. As a teacher, the right goal is, we're going to meet those 21st century standards, those technology standards for our kids. So, but purchasing it now becomes an action step. The funding source, you know, that's one of the issues I have with creating this, and I live in Sandwich, I have no idea what the funding sources are, and what's attainable and what's optional, you know, what's out there. But, so I guess that was my point. To me, purchasing them is not a good school improvement plan goal. Meeting those technology standards is an excellent goal.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
We're going to need a motion to continue past 10:00.
All right. You making that motion?
Yes.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Go ahead.
Let me disagree slightly with you, maybe we'll find a middle ground. I agree with you that the purchase of those SMART boards is not a good goal, but I also don't like achieving 21st century technology as a goal either. It can be an action item, because the goal, it seems to me, especially if we're talking about student achievement, has to be student achievement. If the way to get there is to have 21st century technology, then I'm perfectly comfortable as that as an action item. Fair enough?
Yeah.
The only other question I have for you, and I'll ask both you and Bob, if, when it comes to student achievement, if you had to break down the percentage of who's responsible for it, you've got three parties in this equation. You've got the student, his or herself, and I realize this might, will vary from grade to grade perhaps, you've got the parents, and you've got the school itself. If you had to break down what percentage is, can we, is, for example, is it 50% the school, 25% the parent, 25% the child? How would you break down, how would you break down the responsibility for achieving a goal of student achievement?
Are we all looking at each other to see who's going to answer?
Yeah. I was looking for the high sign from Dr. Ruben.
I want answers from both of you.
Well, I'll start. I'll be semi-brave or just tired at 10 o'clock, but I think 100% of the responsibility to learn is on the student. 100% of the responsibility to teach is on the teacher, and 100% of the responsibility to reinforce the learning by the student and the teaching by the teacher is on the parent.
But if learning doesn't occur, break that down.
I can't.
You can't.
No, because learning does not occur, could be for a thousand different reasons. So to assign responsibility, if you will, would be, I think, very tough in a generic kind of a way. There are certainly situations that I can think of that 100% of the responsibility is on the student or the parent, or the, you know, I just don't think there's, I think it's easier to be able to say, I feel pretty confident that the provision of instruction is 100% on the teacher, I feel that the provision of the learning is 100% on the student, and the parent's role is really split between supporting the teaching that's occurring and the student's responsibility to be able to learn.
Well, just a final comment.
You didn't ask her though. No, I'm kidding.
Bonnie, go ahead.
No, I agree. I think, you know, if that young person comes to my class in the morning and he hasn't eaten since noon the day before, then your percentages are completely off. And my job is, you know, how do you impress upon them that the need to practice their math facts at night when they haven't eaten is a useless point? And I, there are so many things that are not within my control, you know, in my perfect world, I take them all home with me and make sure they're all fed and happy, and there's no bullying and all those things, but it doesn't work that way, I don't have that control, and my kids would kill me, so, my own kids. But it's just, I don't think you can do that.
Society is attempting to do what I just described, and I think, and they're laying it all at the school. And I think it's important for us to think about that equation, and our goals need to reflect the reality rather than the nirvana that some people think exists. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica, anything?
Okay.
Elsa?
Yeah.
Just a couple of things. Bonnie, thank you for coming. I know it's really late and you've got to be here in the morning, and I really appreciate it, and I know you've got to go back to Sandwich, I did that trip for a long time. The only thing that I wrote down here to say, and you answered it here towards the end, was that there's got to be some kind of format when we present this in the spring to make an evaluation on how successful we were on the current, what we're operating on right now. And just for the record, as inconsistent as these school improvement plans have been, they're a lot more consistent than they were when I first came on the committee. So I think incrementally has improved for a while, but I'm delighted with this format. I think, just like anything else, it's probably going to be a work in progress, but you know what? I think it's a great starting point, and I really think it's ambitious to try to get it done this spring, and I look forward to the presentation of the principals with this. So with that being said, again, thank you for what you do, and I really appreciate the efforts, and I also appreciate the efforts of the volunteers, because it's like I said before, not to beat a dead horse, but that is so indicative of what it is to teach and wear him. We keep putting things on people's plate and it keeps stepping up, so, again, thank you for myself personally, and I think I speak for the board, so thank you very much.
And they were really wonderful, and they really only did get water.
Worked on chocolate.
Is there any other business at this time? A little team of motion?
Some more.
Second.
Second.
Thank you so much.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
All opposed?